Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of Salem City Council, our work session for Wednesday, September 17th, 2025. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Taigen?
Present.
Counselor Nishiyoka?
Present.
Counselor Matthews?
Here.
Counselor Gwen? Counselor Brown?
Present.
Counselor Vang?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Here.
Counselor Varney?
I'm here.
Mayor Julie Hoy?
Here. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and face...
Counselor Nishiyoka, could we have approval for the special meeting agenda for the meeting?
I move to approve the special meeting agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second by Taigen. Counselor, to your motion.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Do I have an addition?
That's an addition. You can handle that next. I apologize.
Yes, no worries. So, the motion is to approve the agenda. I have nothing to say on it. We just need to vote.
Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Taigen?
Aye.
Counselor Nishiyoka?
Aye.
Counselor Matthews? Counselor Gwen?
Aye.
Counselor Vang?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Varney?
Aye.
Mayor Julie Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nishiyoka, are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Yes, there are. I move for additions of an additional or a revised report for the agenda.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Taigen. Counselor, to your motion.
Yes, this was on our diocese and it is, I think it came to us late this afternoon. I think this was updated, so it has been added. That was all.
Great, thank you. Any discussion? Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Nishiyoka?
Aye.
Counselor Matthews?
Aye.
Counselor Gwen? Counselor Brown?
Aye.
Counselor Vang?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Varney? Mayor Julie Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Taigen?
Counselor Gwen will be joining soon in Zoom. Okay, thank you. All right, we are moving on then to our discussion of safety and liability. What did I say? Liability? Liability? That's funny. Okay, no, it is livability, for sure. Safety and livability. Thank you. Thank you. Scott, do you want to pull the presentation? Thank you.
And we may note that Counselor Gwen has joined us.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening. Tonight, we'll walk through Safety and Livability Action Plan, and this plan reflects council's direction, community input, and the need for balanced, sustainable solutions and funding. So, the council has given us clear objectives and goals. We did have a work session on this and then also several conversations in council meetings. Public safety, behavioral health, health, and cleanliness have been identified as council objectives and goals. Our focus tonight is on service expansions and funding options that can be acted on immediately or in the near term. The council also has expressed interest in having further conversations about drug prevention and enforcement and public restrooms, so we'll be having that discussion, too. Just to recap, I'm not going to go over these slides, but I just want to kind of talk about, we have made significant progress and I want to highlight that tonight. We have actively engaged community partners and members, and then we'll continue to do that in months ahead. I know there is more work to be done on this. I will be attending a lot of neighborhood association meetings this month and next month, and we're still trying to figure out actual plan on how to engage different stakeholders with this, so there is more to come on this. This slide also, let me kind of, sorry. So, this slide kind of talks about what we have done on the community engagement side of it, and then, sorry for the font of this slide, we don't have to worry about the details, but I just want to give, this council had really good conversation about different funding options and then, and connection to those services. We'll talk more about that today, but I just wanted to give you a recap of what we have discussed in the previous meetings. So, for the immediate priorities, we did talk about the need to take some steps right now, and for example, like, we were, we did increase police visibility. This kind of was implemented in July 2025, and this is the temporary measure that we used using salary savings and also for the improved cleanliness side of it. We are internally working with the employees and the departments for better coordination and efficiency and in order to create a greater impact. So, I'm very happy about the progress that we are making there. And so, this is kind of immediately right now, what are we doing about safety and livability is these two. So, on this particular slide, it talks about, there are three different objectives and goals that this council has prioritized, which is healthy, safe, and clean Salem. And just to kind of looking ahead, what is the near-term solution? That is from January through July, what are we going to do? And when we are talking about the long-term, that is after July 2026. What we try to do on this slide is to, again, try to kind of connect the same color coding scheme here. So, with the healthy program in January 2026, we will be, we are looking at piloting community health response model, and it, the slide does list the cost that is associated with it and also some possible fund sources we have for that particular program, and then also, how does it look like for July, and what are some possible funding after July 2026? So, they're kind of a little bit different because of some of the available funding sources for us. And so, on the safety side, we did talk about, the council talked about adding HST officers and also what is some possible fund sources for that. And then, after July 2026, on the Safe Salem Initiative, with the HST officers, the chief talked, did give a present, talk about this in the previous meetings, also to be looking into community policing model. So, there is a cost associated with it. Sorry for the font again, but we'll be showing a slide with a bigger font so that you can see that. And on the cleanliness, again, there's a program from January to July, that is your near-term solution, and then, what do we do after July 2026? So, just to kind of highlight, there are some other discussion that we had, especially around, I think, healthy, safe, and clean initiatives, like public restrooms and ambassador program. So, there was, there were other topics that we did talk about, but what's on this slide is really the, something that we can address with the current funding or the future funding, and I also, and the council haven't had an in-depth conversation about the public restrooms and the drug enforcement and prevention side of it, so we'll be talking about that today. But this is, this slide represents what we talked so far, and then also, programs that can have a funding source attached to it. So, that's kind of what made on this list. So, this is kind of my attempt to showing that we, I did mention several times that I'm looking at this as a package, so that's kind of what the box represents. It's not anything different than the previous slide. So, the box on the left is that near-term solution and a package, and the box on the right is what do we do after July 1st. So, the leadership team and I had in-depth conversation about how to make this a sustainable solution. So, that's kind of the number one, and also, how do we make some progress with it, some real progress? And when we think of it as, it is a three-legged stool, each part supports the other. I think that's kind of the reason why we are recommending this as a package, and it's important that we invest into these programs together because they do help each other. So, this is a package that has healthy, safe, and clean Salem. And the near-term solution, which is for six months, starting from January, that's going to cost around $650,000, and we did list the fund sources that are associated with it, and after July 1st, the total cost per year is $2.75 million. And the fund sources that are listed there, and we have like right now, so far, we have like around five different sources that we can tap into, and our recommendation is to wait and see how these funds perform because we do have paid parking fund and the EMS fund, which is kind of new. We're still trying to figure out if there is money that we will be receiving through opioid settlements, so we don't have a whole lot of information around this, so our recommendation is to wait on this and see how these funds perform, and then use a mix of these available fund sources rather than straining any one fund. The other thing that I want to make sure that I highlight, you know, it's important that we cannot be ahead of the budget committee, so there is a process that the budget committee goes through. So, for the long-term solutions, and after July 1st, whatever the solution that we have is, I think it's important that we go through that regular budget process and identify those fund sources and solutions. So, at this point, you know, I would like to invite Chief Gorbod to, who will discuss the outcomes we are aiming to achieve through the community health response model.
Good evening, Mayor. Council, thanks for having me tonight. David Gorbod, Fire Chief. Within the Salem Fire Department, we certainly have a commitment to protect the health, safety, and well-being of our community, every member of our community, and increasingly, emergency responders are called to situations involving mental health crises, substance use and abuse, and individuals who frequently rely on the 911 system, and those challenges continue to strain our public safety resources and often do not provide the individuals with the specialized cares that they need. To address this gap, the Salem Fire Department proposes a six-month pilot program launching in January, representing a model that integrates emergency medical services and mental health and substance use expertise to ensure the right care at the right time in the right place. Our composition recommendation is for one paramedic to provide advanced life support and treatment, including medically assisted treatment for addiction, emergency medical technician to assist with patient care and transport, and a mental health associate for crisis intervention, de-escalation, and a direct linkage to behavioral health and substance use and treatment services. Our pilot is recommended to start at 40 hours per week and start in downtown, but also move to the southeast area in the Lancaster corridor. One of the areas we will be working through is dispatch coordination with the Willamette Valley Communication Center, and our goals and objectives were, are to provide timely and appropriate care for individuals experiencing behavioral health and substance use issues, reduce the burden of traditional emergency services by diverting non-acute behavioral health calls away from fire companies and ambulances, engage high-utilized users of the 911 system with proactive outreach, connecting them with sustainable community supports, expand access to evidence-based treatments for substance use disorders, including medication-assisted treatments, equip team members with specialized training in de-escalation, community service navigation, resource coordination, connections to housing, emergency care, and long-term care, explore safe transport alternatives for appropriate patients to go to destinations other than already overburdened emergency departments, looking at sobering centers, crisis stabilization centers, and urgent cares, and then to strengthen the collaboration between the Salem Fire Department, Marion County Health, and all of the providers in our area. Some of the measurable outcomes that we're looking for, a reduction in repeat 911 usage among our high-utilized users. In some months, less than half a percent of our 911 callers create over 6% of our call volume. The number of responses conducted by the team itself, the number of calls where a fire company or an ambulance remained available for other emergencies, the number of individuals contacted and assessed, the number of successful connections to mental health, substance use, or housing resources, the number of individuals referred or initiated into medical assistance treatments, the number of alternative destination transports that were able to divert away from our emergency departments, and then qualitative feedback from participants, first responders, and community partners. One thing I would mention is there is conversations about the difficulty to attain qualified mental health professionals, and we have been coordinating with Marion County, having the conversations. Certainly, there is a difficulty at the medical health clinician level, which is a master's level, but we're proposing using a mental health assistant, this is a bachelor's level, still providing those services, but readily available in the community and through Marion County. This would be a cost-share program where Marion County would pay for the personnel costs of the medical health professional, and the Fire Department would pick up the costs of the paramedic and the EMT. I am going to hold there, and I will be available for any questions you may have.
Counselor Brown?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Chief, thank you for the presentation. Can you go back and share with us those three entities, like the co-response? Can you describe those?
Yes, sir. So, the first would be a paramedic, one of our paramedics from the Fire Department, providing advanced life support care. Next would be an emergency medical technician, that's an emergency medical technician, basic level, but assist with our paramedic on those types of calls where you need two medical professionals, and the third would be a mental health associate provided by the county of Marion.
Got it. And that third one, the mental health professional, that's the area toward the person needs a master's, correct?
That is the one that is very difficult to attain, and so, we're proposing a mental health associate. It's a bachelor's level, still significant experience in the field, understands how to navigate those systems, but is not at that master's level that is very difficult to attain right now.
Okay, and one final more, Madam Mayor? So, maybe I missed it. So, with those three, if there's a call, a 911 call, and this is to lower the usage, and someone, you know, there's a harm against their life, will one of these three speak to that, or will that call go directly to Chief Womack and his team?
It depends on the call. If somebody is, if there's a danger to a community where it's outside of oneself, where there's a legitimate threat to the community, that would be a law enforcement issue. I can tell you, a vast majority of our calls, that is not the case. It is, there are mental health crises where the person is not functioning but not posing a threat, and then the substance use and abuse issues that are pervasive in many areas of our community, as well as our high-utilizers and 911.
So, would it be fair to say that if, if one of those three realize all of a sudden that someone is about to be harmed, one of those three would make the 911 call? Is that how that would possibly play out?
Well, one of those three, we have a radio with a direct contact to dispatch, so it wouldn't go through a 911 system, but it essentially goes dispatch center where we get immediate response for law enforcement.
Okay, and one last one. So, you had mentioned that with that particular team, they're going to connect with, obviously, you know, treatment centers and different, you know, behavioral specialists, whatever kind of programs. If this is, happens at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, what, like, what's the outcome? Like, what would happen to that person, and where would they go?
Well, during a pilot program, we would not be staffed. I, we're going to ground-truth the program for 40 hours a week. I believe it's going to be incredibly effective. We would come back to council and ask that there's an expansion of services.
Got it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Chief, it's music to my ear seeing you bring this proposal back. I know you brought this to us on our July 21st work session, and I'm so thrilled to see us starting to really drill down into how this program will actually work. One of the things that I would love to hear a little bit more, can you give us an example of a call that is more appropriately suited for this group than, say, Fire Department or Police? Because one of the things that I have been trying to do to educate our public, I have to overcome that question, well, why don't you just send Fire to it? Why don't you just send Police? Why do we need this group instead of those? Can you help give us a couple real-world examples of the kinds of calls that would be much better suited to this community health response model than your firefighters or the Police Department?
Absolutely. So, one would be our substance use and overdose responses. We have a considerable number of overdose responses right now. The only resources we have is to send a fire engine and ambulance to that call. With this particular model, this unit could go to that call. With the paramedic and the EMT, they can provide that lifesaving treatment, and also with that, right now, we are limited on what we can provide. Right now, we provide naloxone is what we provide. Many people know it as Narcan. Right now, we wake up our patients, essentially. Oftentimes, they're in respiratory arrest, they're on the verge of death. We provide naloxone. Within 20 or 30 seconds, they're alert, and they're in withdrawal, and they've now abandoned the scene, and we have provided no treatment further. We've not connected with any services whatsoever. By doing medical assisted treatments such as Subloxin, that actually not only reverses the effects of an opiate, it also takes away with the withdrawal, and at that moment, we can start having those conversations. We do not have to have a ambulance and a fire engine tied up. We can now coordinate with other services. One of them would be, the county of Marion has the Prime Plus program that is specifically geared toward opiate addiction, and we can provide that, wait there for 15 minutes until they get there, without having to tie up these vital resources in our community, would be an example.
Yes, Counselor Nishiyoka?
Thank you. Thank you for that information. One of the questions I had is in regards to, you said Marion County, you're working with Marion County with regards to helping offset the costs for the mental health associate. Is there also some discussion with Polk County, or is that not something that's currently in the, in the works, I guess, is what I, like, know?
Yeah, well, one thing, I'll be clear, is Marion County is very interested. They have not committed yet, but we're having those conversations. Their commissioners will be, I think, taking up in November. But in the meantime, we're working with Marion County Health and Human Services, it's going very well. I think we're very aligned on what we want for outcomes, and so, I think that's progressing. We just, we know that right now, it's a pilot program. Obviously, our need does not stop at the river, and so, we know that, that looking at Polk County is going to be, if this is successful and we're going to move forward, Polk County is certainly the next conversation. There's also other providers out there, Northwest Human Services, other providers that provide this type of resource, that maybe that's a more appropriate organization to provide it. We'll see, where we're not limited geographically.
Thank you. Counselor Matthews?
So, you mentioned kind of the outcomes aspect and the measurables that you're trying to measure, and so, I was trying, you were saying them fast, so I was trying to grab them as we were going.
Yes, sir.
So, I want to make sure I've kind of got them right, but one of them was ED usage reduction. Is that right?
Say it again.
ED usage reduction, right?
Yes, sir.
And so, I guess, my one concern is it sounded like the ED, the metric that we were using on something like that was us referring our patients or sending our patients to somewhere else, but it seems like the outcome we're shooting for is to have a reduction in ED actual patients, right? And so, it seems like, I guess my point I'm trying to get here is that in that particular instance and a few other ones I've picked out here, I think we're kind of going after the inputs again of like, this is what we're doing, and we're hoping it has the outcome that we want, which is to have the reduction in hospital visits. But it feels like we should be tracking hospital visits as the actual, as the actual metric, because that's the outcome we're trying to have an effect on. It was kind of the same thing, I think I was looking in here, and like, the police response reduction, fire response reduction, it was all based around the idea of kind of going after these top 100 or top-most users, which I think is true, and for these top 100 users, it might, that probably makes sense. I think the downside is, is it actually reducing the volume that a fire station is seeing or that a police officer is seeing? And so, it seems like, is there, is there an outcome metric that we can tie better than these input metrics?
Yeah, so, when we talk about specifically emergency room department visits, one is to reduce the impact on emergency departments, yes. The other is to get them the right services. The emergency room is not the right place for, we know it's not the right treatment for many of the patients we go to, but we do not have any other choices right now. We have had several conversations with many of the other services that exist, urgent cares, Bridgeway is working on a sobering center now, those type of services to where not only are reducing the ED visits, but they're connecting with the appropriate services to get the resources they need, so there's no longer, there is a reduction in the use of those services.
Counselor Nishiyoka?
Thank you. Sorry, I neglected to ask this earlier. Will there be any changes to the call center specifically with information about 988 versus 911? Are there plans? And again, I understand this is a pilot program, and some of these things may develop as you're working through it, but I'm just curious if you're looking at using a 988 number or if that is going to go straight to the same call center or to somewhere else?
We're looking at comprehensive solutions and comprehensive strategy. The Salem Fire Department has worked very closely with Salem Police Department. We worked with Salem Police Department and our legal counsel on crafting a policy on which calls we can send over to 988. Right now, we have brought that forward to the advisory board for the Willamette Valley Communication Center. We do have 32 agencies that are there, so we're trying to have a standardized approach across that, but so far, everybody is very supportive. I think we're going to see a good amount of calls that are redirected when they're non-emergent to those services.
Looks like there's a lot of work ahead. Thank you very much for getting ready for it.
Counselor Brown, did you have something?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Chief, I have a question, and the question is for you, but also for us up here, because I'm trying to connect the dots. I'm always trying to connect the dots. So, I understand that someone makes a call, 911, this particular team is going to go out, and at the dispatch center, they're going to make a decision as to if it's going to be the co-response model or if it's going to be actual 911 and the police show up, correct?
I would say it's joint. Sometimes, it is made at the dispatch center. Sometimes, we, we're always listening to the radio, and this would be a team that is constantly listening to the radio, seeing if, is this a call that they could relieve from one of our heavy resources? Is this appropriate call to go to? Is this an appropriate call to go to?
Got it.
Go ahead.
Got it. And so my, my next question, again, it's, it's not, you can answer it, but I'm really asking, you know, my colleagues here and Madam Mayor. So, if we have, you know, dozens of folks that are on the street, living in tents, some by choice, some not, and no one from that particular encampment is being called or looked at or whatever, how do we then get someone off the street to where they can get into a center? Like, in my mind, you call 911, I know someone's gonna show up. But yet, when I travel through our city, again, you don't have to answer this, when I travel through our city, we see the encampments, we see the need, we see the hurt, we see the lack of. And so for us, I'm trying to ask the question, how do we deal with that component of this so we can get this group of people off the street with the resources that they need, possible job? That's the piece I need some help trying to connect the dots.
I, if I could answer.
Oh, please.
I think, I think there's a distinct difference between what this model's proposing, working, targeting our highest utilizers, 911, that oftentimes are having either mental health, substance use issues, many are unhoused. The emergent responses that can be taken from our companies, and the street response outreach that happens with some other providers. And I think, certainly, it's, it's a, we're working in unison, but I think those providers also provide a different service, which is actually just going out cold, cold calling, if I could say that, to, to these encampments, and, and trying to connect those with services, where we're really focused on those that we know need help. We're also focusing on the geographic areas. I can, our top response areas, some of them, we know that that is in, almost entirely unhoused, having these type of issues, and so we can concentrate on those areas.
But that would not be the leading responsibility for the co-response team? That's not their top response, I mean, that's not their top responsibility, is it?
Which one? Of just cold, cold calls?
Yep, cold calling, yep.
That is not, that is not our intent.
Right.
I think it's certainly, you know, if we come across somebody, but there's, there's enough work to be done between our high utilizers and 911, and just responding to calls. I will say one thing, we are trying to change the verbiage on co-response, only because we don't want to confuse it with some of the co-response models that have law enforcement and mental health. So, we're trying to use community health as the verbiage, just to make sure that we separate that and know that this is not a law enforcement-based team.
Right. And one of the things I do want to say, I wanna go on record with, with this, and I would love to hear Counselor Matthews' input. You know, we have gone on, many of us here, if not all of us, we've gone on a variety of tours throughout the city, who work with those individuals that are, you know, unhoused, you know, unsheltered, young people. And what we found out, when I say we, you know, just last week, we were on a tour, and Ward Five definitely has its share of encampments. I would probably say Ward Five probably has the most encampments, because there's so many places where, where people don't travel. You know, we, we just, you wouldn't assume that someone lives there, but they do live there. And so I guess my concern is, we have entities that, that help, we have entities that have received monies, we have entities that have, you know, built places and beds and everything. My concern is still, how do we get so many of these individuals who want a place to live? If the co-response model is called, can the model that I'm referring to, how can we get these people out there on a day-to-day basis where they are visiting the camps and asking these crucial questions? That's where I'm at. Like, how do we, how do we get that part done?
I can tell you just from our, from the individuals that we respond to, either contact of high utilizers, 911, or through emergency response, that is part of the, of the goal of the team, is that they connect with services. Yesterday, we met with many, Bridgeway, Northwest Human Services, Options Counseling, many different entities, we're already having the conversations on how do you do the warm handoff. So we know that we're not there for long-term care. We know we're there for stabilization, for trying to contact and connect to our high utilizers, 911, and then we utilize those other organizations that take on the long-term burden.
Counselor Nordike, did you have something?
I just wanted to make sure I understood, it, 40 hours a week, you feel you're gonna have enough for them to do, it sounds like?
I, I have no doubt they're gonna be very busy.
Right. And that's because you monitor the data on the current number of mental health calls and overdose calls and other things that we're already getting, right?
I can tell you, for example, Engine One, it's our second busiest engine company in the city. They're incredibly busy. This summer, on, in July, 43% of their calls was to our unhoused population. And the majority of that is those that are in, they're in vulnerable positions, that are utilizing 911 for primary health care, they're having substance abuse and mental health challenges. And just that one district alone downtown is gonna be enough of volume for the hours that we're proposing on a pilot.
Understood. Thank you, Chief. If I may, Madam Mayor, I believe you also mentioned you might also serve northeast Salem. Is that a long-term plan? Is there like, is phase one downtown, and phase two would be northeast, help me, or is it really too soon to tell? I, just help me understand.
No, I'd like to see, like a, like a two-month, 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 or three-month, three-month split to, to vet it. I, I, there is need in both of those, tremendous need. I, I don't have to tell anybody here, in both of those places.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Matthews, did you have something?
I, I just wanted to ask, so, again, kinda going back to how we, how we measure success, because in July of '26, we'll have to make a decision on if it's successful or not. And so, are each metric that you're tracking, is it gonna have a success target set with it? Where we, do you have projections on how much we'll see a reduction, or anything like that? Like, is there a target we're actually trying to hit?
Well, right now, it's gonna be hard to tell you exactly what the target is, but if we can, if we're taking the call volume off of our units significantly, and they're available for other calls, and most of our units, we're on concurrent calls constantly. And so if we're freeing them up to where we have, what we call it is reliability percentage, where it means how often is that company available for the call in their district, we're gonna evaluate reliability percentage if they're taking a call that takes off our companies. As well, the overdoses, the emotionally disturbed persons calls that we get, those are many of the target calls that will take off our companies. Having our companies respond to especially the mental health crises, they're not trained for it, and if we can take those off our companies, that's gonna be very beneficial.
Counselor Nishioke.
Thank you. To add on to Counselor Nordike's question, I, again, recognizing that this would be a pilot program, so there's still a lot that you'll be working out. Let's run the scenario that, let's say, the unit is going to be centered primarily downtown, but somebody out in southeast calls you with a similar mental health crisis or drug overdose. Would you not allow that unit to go there and send fire trucks instead, because that would be the closest? Or, I'm just trying to understand how this pilot program might be implemented in those initial months?
Yep. As a pilot, we see it in a geographic area. So, a downtown-ish area for that amount of time, and then move to the northeast area in that amount of time. It is a proof of concept. You know, in the future, what does that look like? Do we see that one north, one south, that can take all those calls? Absolutely. We'll have to see, and, and see if, what the funding looks like, and we are looking for different mechanisms.
So the call center would be the ones that are fielding that, figuring out who's gonna be going where, that if it's, even though it's a mental crisis or a drug overdose, and it's not in the core area where that response team is, then they would direct it to the right?
To what we're doing now, for?
Yeah.
Exactly. And, yes.
Thank you.
Correct.
Counselor Tygen.
Thank you. I had a response to Counselor Brown's prompt to the group, just in terms of, thank you for the presentation. Would I, would I hear the, the benefits of this approach being sort of threefold, and I'm sure there's even more, but to the fire department and emergency responders themselves by narrowing who needs to respond, thus freeing up resources? To the emergency room for lessening the burden on their resources for folks that don't necessarily need to be there? And then the individuals themselves? But that's all in that sort of emergent moment. And I, and I think, Counselor Brown, to your question, I don't really understand this, and I don't think it's designed to be a, a program that would reduce the number of encampments. You know, and I, you're kinda asking that question. To me, that wouldn't be the, the right outcome, to think this is gonna come from this. We would see a more humane, more efficient system, but not necessarily a reduction in the amount of people in encampments across the city. So that's kinda how I'm judging it, and I just wanted to offer that as a response.
Counselor Brown?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Tygen. The reason I asked that question, and I appreciate the follow-up, was because we need to elevate that part. Because if we don't elevate that part, that's what the community is gonna grade us on. They're not going to, hear me when I say this clearly, the community, they're not gonna grade us on how many phone calls we got or didn't get. What the community is gonna grade us on, they're gonna grade us on what they can visually see. And if we do not fix that, it can be six months, 12 months, 36 months. It's not gonna change the outcome of the community's perception, because we know that good work is happening, but we still gotta find a way to connect those dots, because if we don't, they're, they're still gonna say, nothing's been happening. Look at the bridge, look here. They'll do all of that, and we'll be back here again. That, that's not on you, per se, but that's something that we have to figure out.
I do apologize for how quickly I mentioned outcomes, but one of them is certainly a number of successful, successful connections to mental health, substance use, and housing resources. And so, we will certainly be tracking those. I mean, that is the intent, that when we encounter these individuals, that we're getting them treatment resources. Right now, we're not, and that, and that's what, that is one of the big benefits here.
Counselor Varney, did you have your hand up? Did you wanna ask a question?
Actually, my questions got answered, because they were all about the 40 hours per week, the implementation, the pilot, the length, the northeast. So, I put my hand down. So, thank you, colleagues and Chief, for answering all those questions and asking.
Great. Thank you. Did someone else down here? Counselor Matthews?
Well, and I'll just double back, kind of similar to what Counselor Brown and Tygen were talking about. I tend to think that all the metrics you've talked about, the intentionality of them is to reduce the overall encampments. Like, I understand that that's a hard thing to track, but anecdotally, I mean, that should be one of the success factors. I don't think it's one that we can measure well, because we don't know exactly how many encampments we have to start with. But I do think anecdotally, a part of the success of this program is hinged on whether we see success in the community. And so, all the metrics that you've, that you've lined out are all intended to have that be the long-term outcome, so.
Yeah, if we connect somebody with housing, then they, I wouldn't be in an encampment.
And a follow-up?
Go ahead.
It's, it's not a question, though. Yes, when you think of the outcomes of how we measure success, because it could be hard, right? This could be hard to measure success. And I would measure success if I were driving down Liberty or Lancaster, or on Fisher Road, wherever I'm at, success for me would be like, oh, I saw people living there two weeks ago, oh, it's cleaned up, no one's there. Now, I wanna be certain that, that may not be success just because I won't see someone there. We could've swept them out, right? And so I wanna make sure that the success is exactly what you're saying it's gonna be, that this individual or this family, they got the resources that they, that they really needed, rather than all of a sudden, there were people sleeping here underneath the bridge, and now they're gone. In my mind, like, oh, it's working, but that may not be the case after all.
Counselor Brown, I, oh, yeah, Counselor Nordike, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I do want to remind folks that the community health response program is a part of the solution. It is not the entire solution to homelessness, and that's, that's never how it would've worked. And I just wanna remind folks, we have a variety of other services and programs that we do to reduce encampments. We've increased the number of shelter beds. We built, we added a navigation center. We have the SOS team to help with cleanliness and to notify people where they are camping illegally. So, don't, I want to make sure that folks understand that we are a part of the solution, and we are working with a lot of great nonprofits to reduce homelessness. That includes Church of the Park, that includes Salem Housing Authority, that includes the Community Action Agency, Family Promise, UGM, Samanka Place, Center for Hope and Safety, the list goes on and on. But, you know, in order to reduce homelessness, the city is a partner in that, but we share that dedication to working with others. This pilot program will absolutely have positive results, I have no doubt of that, because it's worked in other places. It's worked in cities all over the country, but no single program is going to reduce encampments. So we want to make sure we're assigning metrics that make sense for this program. The metrics for the navigation center would be, how many people did we receive in a month, and how many did we move out into a positive destination? So, I wanna make sure that we're keeping metric, keeping track of which metrics make sense for which program. But this program is not going to unilaterally end all of the encampments downtown. That's not its design.
Counselor Varney, did you have a question?
Yes, I just wanted to add on to that, because I'm trying to partially close the loop here on, on outcomes. So I guess, but my question is, for each encounter, how far is the data tracked at that encounter? I mean, is it tracked all the way to, is it in a, a medical transport, or ended in a connection to shelter or housing, or something? Being data-wise, what sort of information will be tracked for that encounter, per person?
You broke up a little bit, but I think what you're asking, asking me is, which data is tracked, and for how long is it tracked? And so, is that's, correct? Yeah. So, we definitely track our response data, we definitely track the data when we hand somebody off, and then we work with those other agencies to track beyond that. Once we, if we get somebody into treatment, if we get somebody into supportive housing or into substance use program, then, then that organization will then track them from there. But we continue to work with those agencies to follow up on outcomes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Well, such a great discussion. I'm not gonna reiterate what everybody else has already said. I do, though, wanna add that we have something exciting coming. Help is on the way, I believe, in terms of the Bloomberg-Harvard collaboration track with all of these efforts to come together and help us to reach not just the people we're trying to serve, but the other entities and agencies within Salem, the county, both counties, the various nonprofits, everyone, to get everybody and find out where everybody is on the page, and help us to move forward well, for the best possible outcomes in the long term. I want what you want, Dr. Brown, in terms of the right help, and for people to get, to not feel the need to live in addiction or in, within a mental health crisis, but be able to find that healing. I want the same thing you do. So, let's start right here. We have a lot to talk about tonight. And, thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. So the, the council also talked about the HST team expansion, and I would like for Chief Womack to share the outcomes we hope to achieve through that program.
It's already on. Mayor, councilors, good evening. Trevor Womack, Chief of Police. It's good to finally have this discussion. I feel it's good to be here with you tonight. And before I even say anything, I just wanna thank you again for all the hard work. This is hard stuff, hard decisions all the time, and you're all volunteers, and I see how much work you put in, so I just wanna recognize that and say thanks. And also, just listened to Chief Kerboth as our new fire chief. I was just so appreciative of having him as a public safety partner. You heard from him, I think you're seeing the credibility there, and the willingness to take on some new, some new approaches, and so I just very much appreciate that, him as a partner. We're talking about homeless again, homelessness again, and so here I am as a police chief, you know, having a conversation about homelessness, which is always a bit of a challenge. So I just wanna talk a little bit about what HST even is. We're talking about recommend, recommendation to expand that team, so I just wanna remind everybody what they are and what they were created for. This team was created just about three years ago, they're still relatively new. It's two officers. And we know, as I've said before, that there, you know, there is no department to end homelessness within the city, there's no department to end homelessness in the county. So by its very nature, this complex problem that we have requires cross-boundary collaboration, right? Requires high levels of collaboration. And so for, for And so, for years, what we've communicated now is that the police, law enforcement, are a critical stakeholder, a key partner, but we see ourselves as a convener and a partner and a collaborator, we're no way the solution to homelessness, right? Even what we're talking about tonight isn't a solution to homelessness. This is about managing and mitigating the situation that's on the ground before us right now. So I want to be very clear about that upfront. I'm not proposing an end to homelessness through the HST. I'm talking about managing and mitigating some of the public health, public safety issues that we see associated with some of our encampments and our folks that are unsheltered. Often, we do find ourselves doing exactly that as police officers in public safety, and fire brothers and sisters as well, just managing and mitigating the associating public safety issues while, hopefully, the longer-term solutions, the end to homelessness is being debated, and policy is being implemented and executed, right? That's the long-term approach that has to happen while we're doing our work. So for us, the key then is, what are we doing, and are we doing it the right way? Right? How are we doing that? How are we managing and mitigating the situation that we're faced with? To me, an example of that is HST, it's our homeless services team. So now you have officers, sworn police officers with full police officer authority, who can obviously help keep people safe when they need to. They can intervene in violence, for example, hold people accountable when violence occurs, but at the same time, they have special training and skills, and they have relationships built over long-term with all of our service provider partners. They understand all of it, and they can work to connect people with services at the same time. And they're closely connected with our SOS team, so we're managing some of these livability issues with our encampments at the same time. So these officers walk that line between, let's say, compassion and accountability, right? And they do that in the right way, that's all they do full-time. So what you're getting is that specialized level of service, not a regular, just a routine patrol officer. Absent HST, what happened even more so is there would be regular patrol officers called into certain situations as they occur, without that level of expertise and training and understanding of how the systems work. The problem that we have now, since we created the team, is the gap that we have is it's not seven-day-a-week coverage. So most of you, we've had this conversation before, we've talked about, even I've recommended the addition of two more HST officers, so that we could have seven-day-a-week coverage. Right now, they're working four days a week as a two-person team, and you can imagine, these issues need constant attention, right? And they can't just be for four days, then go away for three days and come back. The situation needs to be kind of navigated constantly. So there's this gap there for HST, and so that's why my priority recommendation, and sort of a long-term vision we have for a community policing model in Salem, my immediate short-term recommendation is to just expand the HST team, two officer positions, that's what we're talking about tonight. So what are they after? Their mission is not necessarily to make arrests. It's not to make arrests at all, frankly, it's to try to mitigate some of those public health situations and those public safety issues by connecting people to services through relationship building, but also keeping everyone safe. Some of these situations, sometimes we don't talk about this often, are very dangerous. There's sexual assaults, there's murders, think about Wallace Marine Park, there's been about a murder in the park one year since I've been here. These are realities of the situation that are associated with encampments. We do have data that shows unsheltered populations, encampments are most more likely to be victims than offenders, but at the same time, they wouldn't be a victim if they weren't in the encampment. So you've got to be real about this situation. And so, we have to mitigate and manage that situation, and we need that attention, that presence from sworn police officers in that danger and environment sometime, that can bring in the service providers, can bring in the right SOS team also. So that's why they're so critical to fill that role. They already relieve lots of calls from regular police officers. We talk about other models to try to relieve our call load. These are the only two officers that handle the dozens and dozens of complaints that come in, in partnership with our SOS team. We don't send, without HST, we'd be sending patrol officers into that, it would be a call for service on patrol. We relieve that by having dedicated full-time HST officers. We should be doing that seven days a week. So some of the outcomes are hard to talk about sometimes, Counsel Matthews, actually, because how do you measure what didn't occur, you know, those type of things? But really, the inputs are a little bit easier to measure. The outcomes are harder, too, because we have numbers of referrals, we have all these things, but it's harder, to Counsel Varney's question, too, it's hard to track people through a whole system. How am I going to know if a referral to ideal options for assisted, you know, medicated system treatment for opioid addiction, what was the result of that? I have no idea. So we can count those inputs a lot of times, but it's very hard to understand the outcome. We can measure other things, Counsel Brown, like the number of encampments and the visibility of encampments. Some of this is purely livability perception issues that we all deal with also, that's a reality. And you want to keep our community spaces more open and free. We shouldn't have encampments blocking public right-of-ways, for example. We can't let that happen. Our sidewalks need to be clear for people to access, especially ADA access. Our parks are community places for people to enjoy and have fun, and we can't have those spaces taken over, right, and just invaded to where you cannot enjoy the parks, the purpose of a park. And so, there is a need, too, to measure some things like that. Are these spaces open and free for use by our community? So there are some measures that we have there. Those are the type of measures that we're looking for. How many referrals are they making? We're hosting monthly service provider meetings, these officers lead those meetings, and so we kind of have a, almost a multidisciplinary team approach, where we bring our service provider partners together and talk about the folks with the highest need and demand, and how we might solve that problem together, so that there is a successful outcome in the end. And so, more open, free spaces, community spaces, less violence is what we're after also. We have data from our gun violence problem analysis that looked at some of the shootings in Salem and so forth. It was about 20% of our shootings involved someone that was unsheltered. So it's not all of our shootings, but it's a good percentage of our shootings. So there is this violent crime component as well, and we can help mitigate that by managing our encampment situations better and connecting people to services. So these are some of the outcomes that we're after through this. But I also have, you know, one of the keys to effective leadership that I found is you have to surround yourself with the best people. And so, I got three of them sitting here with me today that always have my back and are helping me with these issues, but Deputy Chief Debbie Aguilar oversees and leads our HST officers in that team. She's also a very close coordinator with Gretchen and the SOS team, and so, you know, she's here also to help answer questions or provide more details, deeper than I can, if that's needed, so. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel Norde.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief, and please extend my gratitude to your entire force. You guys do an impressive amount of work in a city that is growing every single day. So first of all, please extend my gratitude to your entire team. I do have some questions. I have about three or four of them, so please bear with me. Is the homeless services team connected to 911, i.e., is 911 dispatched trained to dispatch HST specifically?
No, we've set up a system now, because frankly, the need, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm close to this.
Sorry, it's really hard to hear in here.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm hard of hearing, and I noticed some people in the audience, if there's a way to turn the volume up on the speakers, I.
Got it.
Or something, it's just hard to hear.
How's that? I gotta heat the mic probably, okay. So, no, we've kind of carved it out of separate process. Because of illegal encampments, quote-unquote, or situations like that, there's so many complaints or concerns citywide, that we've direct folks now to an online portal. And so, even when they call dispatch, they're referred to, you know, submit this via the online portal. And then that way, every Monday morning, what Gretchen Bennett's team, SOS, and my team do is they review all of those concerns that have come in, and they try to prioritize where they're going to spend their time. Because actually, there's a lot of laws and restrictions with how we deal with the situations now. It's case law and also state law about giving notice, right? And so people have to be noticed. Before we can ask someone to move, you have to give them a 72-hour notice, you're going to have to deal with their property and their items, and so, and we want to coordinate with our service providers. We don't do quote-unquote sweeps, like in the old sense, that negative connotation. Sometimes we do have to move folks along for health or safety reasons, and so there's a process that we need to go through, which is why HST is so important, because they do that work all the time. So it's not necessarily the 911 calls like that, they're really carved out for that separate work, really specific to unmanaged encampment situations.
Thank you, Chief. And you mentioned the online portal, I think this would be a great opportunity to plug that. What is this online portal that you're referring to?
Oh, I knew you were going to ask me that. Debbie? Yeah. Or actually Gretchen.
It's the, I remember, it's the online portal for you to report concerns of encampments, isn't that right, Gretchen?
Yes, it's exactly that. But I imagine if you Google it, you can go to the city website and, you know, file an online report for unmanaged encampments or homelessness. There's a whole webpage on what the city is doing for homelessness, and it's part of that webpage, yes.
Yeah, absolutely, and I've referred people to that portal, and I appreciate the fact that that is an option. My next question was, you know, tell us a little bit more about the 72-hour notice. I think most members of the public don't know that under Oregon law, this is not a city rule, this is not a Salem PD rule, but there is Oregon law that requires notice before telling someone they have to, they can't camp here and they have to move. Can you just briefly explain to us what that 72 requirement is?
Yeah, the Oregon law kind of prescribes how we must give notice, that we have to deal with folks' property, we have to take reasonable considerations on time, place, and manner, as far as how we can regulate camping and so forth. So that's also why it's so important to have officers dedicated to this, because it is a complex matter.
Right.
It has to be done the right way, and so you need dedicated officers for that work.
Okay. And I also want to point out, whenever I drive downtown, I think a couple of the hotspots that I see, where I regularly see encampments, they're there one day, they're cleaned up one day, and then they're back again. Those are, some of those encampments are actually underneath the bridges. Are those city property or state property?
This is the complicated jurisdictional issues we have, and so we don't have authority to remove people from state property. That's ODOT and, you know, OSP's jurisdiction. And so, we've developed over time a pretty strong partnership. We got to the point, it's taken several years, where there were at least pretty regular coordinated efforts happening between ODOT, OSP, and ourselves. Because we have HST, that kind of coordination can happen, but that's always in flux based on state budget issues and so forth, and so we can't rely on that consistent attention with, from ODOT and OSP either. Yeah, but you're right, there's a lot of jurisdictional issues. The safety issues, too, for the unsheltered population here. When I say safety, it's everybody involved, the cops, the service providers, the unsheltered folks themselves. You may remember, maybe three years ago, when four unsheltered folks were struck in an encampment and killed by drunk drivers. We got a lot in the mix there. We got drunk driving and traffic safety issues, we've got unsheltered folks living in a very unsafe location, which happened to not be city property, by the way. So it becomes a very complex situation to solve. You need dedicated staff to help navigate all that.
No, I thank you for reminding us of that, Chief. I attended their funeral service, it was really sad. Most of those people were pretty young. A few more questions, and I will yield the floor. So, homeless services team, as I understand, they are the complement to the SOS team, and that's the sanitation team. So, it's the SOS folks who are picking up garbage and other things. At this point, the notice has been served, people have been told they have to move along, and they've either abandoned or what have you. So at this point, you've got actual city workers who are cleaning up garbage, and the HST folks are there to provide safety and security as that process happens. Am I tracking this correctly?
Exactly right, and sometimes I get asked, why can't we do that cleanup work without the cops? And technically, you can, some of that, but ultimately, only police officers have the authority to enforce violations and criminal violations. So when someone's trespassing or is being forced to move, you know, law enforcement has to do that, and so we need to be part of that team to create the space for the cleanup to happen in certain areas where we need it to happen, if that makes sense.
It does, Chief. I've spoken with one of our code enforcement officers who was really advocating for police support for this sort of thing, based on her own interactions in the field as enforcement officer. Now, she's told one of my neighborhood groups, oh no, this is a safety issue, and we do want our officers there. Couple more questions, and then I'll wrap it up. Can you, so since HST complements the sanitation workers, how much of your officers' time is spent working alongside SOS, and how much of their time is spent engaging with individuals who are unsheltered on their own time, if you can?
Yeah, and DC Aguilar might have a little more specific, but generally speaking, the, kind of that weekly focus that we decide, that priority list, right? Maybe this week, it's, we need to address some issues at Marion Square Park, or Wallace Marine Park, or Cascades Gateway, or Lancaster Drive, whatever the kind of priority is in the city we're dealing with. It takes their time to do the noticing work, the police officers are doing that noticing work, while they're doing the noticing work and documenting who they're noticing, right? It all has to be tracked and documented. They're doing that outreach and engagement work at the same time. So much of the work relies on voluntary compliance, that it has to be relationship-based policing. Last thing we want to do is have to try to arrest somebody for trespassing, who, by the way, we can't take to jail, they're not held in jail anyway, it's kind of a fruitless effort. And so we really need to try to find that voluntary compliance as much as we can, and so there's a lot of time invested in the relationship building, and while they're doing that, they're connecting the people to service providers when people are willing to do that. Part of this conversation, we do have to recognize that these are human beings, obviously, we need to treat with dignity and respect, and they have rights, but also, they have the right, the freedom of choice. They make their own personal decisions. We can't force people to go into a house, we can't force people to take up services. And so, to Counsel Brown's point, there's a challenge there, no matter what. No matter how many services we provide, or availability of services we provide, folks still have to make a voluntary choice to engage in those services. And sometimes that's where the rub is, and so, those are the folks, sometimes on our street, that are out there longer than we'd like to see, kind of the hard-housed and those challenging cases, because they have to make the choice. And that's why the relationship is so important. Those officers know many members in our sheltered community, they've built trust and relationship with them, so when that moment of clarity comes, and they're ready to uptake services, they have a trusted partner to connect them to those services.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Counsel Norde, I apologize, but the city attorney has something to add.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
For just a moment.
Thank you.
I just wanted to comment on one of the things that the chief said regarding the complexity in the 72-hour rule, and we talked about some of the ODOT properties. ODOT actually has a separate statute, which requires them to provide a 10-day notice, which obviously adds to the complexity to get those sites cleaned up.
Thank you.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that's a great clarification, much appreciated. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood, so Chief, when I asked, how much of the HST's time is spent with SOS versus on their own, doing that individual engagement? Can you give us an estimate? Is it 50% of their time with SOS on average? I'm just wondering.
Yeah, let me ask DC Aguilar to come up.
Hi, Debbie Aguilar, Deputy Chief, Salem Police. So as far as a percentage, I would probably lean on Gretchen a little bit, but I can tell you the number of hours that our officers spend in the field in the camps. Now, part of that time might be in partnership with SOS, but this current year, so from January 1 to September 15, they've spent approximately 513 hours out in those camps. So that doesn't include, like, time driving in between the camps, or any paperwork time that they have. So like I said, I can't give you exact percentage, but that's about, I would say probably at least 30, 40% with SOS, but again, I'd probably have to lean on Gretchen for an exact percentage.
That's okay, and you can always come back to us another time. I know sometimes it's a bit of a pop quiz, when we have random questions.
Thank you.
All right, my two final questions, Chief. Can you give me an example of a time, you mentioned that the homeless services team frees up your officers for other, quote-unquote, "regular" police calls. Can you give me an example of the kind of call you would send your homeless services team officers to?
Before, I would just say that none of the, Patrol doesn't handle any of those calls. And so, all of those complaints went to Patrol as a calls for service previously. Now they're all routed through a portal and managed through SOS and HST. And so, none of those calls go to Patrol anymore. You have specially trained, skilled officers that respond in a very thoughtful way to those calls now.
Okay, so to make sure I'm understanding, then, they, the homeless services team only responds to calls or requests made through the portal, or perhaps over the radio?
They're homeless services team, they respond only to unmanaged encampment situations.
Okay.
It's their full-time job.
Okay, got it, got it.
Now, we still do, I just, we do want to clarify, sometimes there's cases that need immediate attention that Patrol still goes to. If there's a call from a citizen after hours where there's a street being blocked, or some safety thing related to it, you're still going to have a Patrol officer dispatch that to you. But for purely calls or concerns about an encampment concern, it's directed through the portal for HST.
Thank you, Chief. My last question. Having worked directly with some of our homeless individuals in the area, and having met with a number of our homeless advocates, there are some, I'm sure you would agree, there are some homeless individuals out there who don't want to work with our police, and what are your officers trained to do if a homeless person refuses their assistance, doesn't want to talk to them, doesn't want to engage with them?
Like I said, we have great success getting voluntary compliance, and so, most of the times, we're able to post, and folks know that a cleanup crew is coming, and they take care of their belongings, and they relocate on their own. It's that voluntary thing that happens. And so very, very few instances where we have to arrest somebody for something like that. Oftentimes, if something else happens, now, sometimes they will encounter some other sort of serious criminal behavior, and they will make an arrest. But for the simple trespassing violation, the movement of the encampment, it's almost all voluntary compliance.
Thank you.
Councilor Nishioke?
Thank you. Appreciate all of this information, and more than anything, appreciate all that your teams do for us. My question is, you've suggested two more homeless service team members, which I would love to see and have been asking for, for some time. I'm wondering if that is actually enough? Do you feel that that would be sufficient, or would there still be such a great need that we might need more than that? Especially, as I understand it, two of these officers have already retired, and have come back, and so everybody deserves a vacation. I'm just curious as to whether or not that is a sufficient number.
We need more of everything, so, you know, this restricted budget environment that we operate in has even caused me to lower my expectations. I started out in 2021, coming off a community policing engagement. A staffing analysis had said we needed 60 to 80 more police officers. We had this grand vision for community policing in Salem. We did a lot of foundational work for that. We redistricted our policing districts, we've created HST, we've started to move that model forward. We did a lot of internal organizational change behind that, but then we had that budget wall that we've all been dealing with. And so now here I am, would be jumping up and down excited to get two positions for HST. There's need throughout the department in so many areas, and so we're constantly juggling the priority decisions. So right now, that's why I'm asking this as my priority, is just to help manage encampments better with two officers. I have much other thoughts, more thoughts, on what other needs we have that we could increase our services to this community, the kind of services they need and demand, actually, and that we want to provide. We could use more.
Thank you.
Councilor Vang?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, again, thank you for your team and the work that you guys do. I'm glad to see that the homeless service team is being discussed as part of the solution. And I share the same question as Councilor Nishioke. Is two additional officers really enough? But, so in my time as counselor, I've gone to a couple of my neighborhood associations, and I've redirected them to this online portal to make their reports, make sure that the information is getting to the HSS team and the SOS team. And a lot of the comments that I get back are, we've reported it, and we aren't getting a response, we haven't seen a difference. Would it be safe to say that the recommendation is to continue to make these reports, continue to go through the online portal? So at the very least, Salem Police Department has the data to help prioritize where to send the HSS team? Would that be an accurate recommendation?
Absolutely. And I don't want to forget the close partnership with SOS. So if we're talking about extending, expanding HST, we'd have to expand HOS too. These go together. But yes, we always need the data, and we're just going to prioritize and manage that list as best we can, but we need the reports to come in, so we know where the need is, and we can try to respond to it.
Thank you.
Councilor Brown?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Chief, as always, I appreciate you and your team. And tonight, you know, you said a couple of things, I just wanted to elevate it. So currently, you said there are two officers who are receiving dozens of calls. Two officers, dozens of calls. I'm going to say it again. Two officers, dozens of calls. And the reason I want to elevate that is because we know that that's a lot. You definitely know that that's a lot, and obviously, there is a, there's a need there. There's a strong need to have more people that can, you know, answer the calls, or check portals, who knows? There's a need for more people. The second thing I want to elevate, what you said, was in regards to the land that ODOT and the state owns. And I'm going to try my best not to, you know, go knocking on the governor's door again, but not going, no promises. So here's where there is a little bit of a disconnect. Well, actually, it's a big connect. It's a big disconnect, because people do not really know, as far as our constituents, they really don't know whose land this is. They automatically think that it's Salem's. And so the first question is, does the county have an HST?
Not exactly like ours, but the county, within the city limits, there's not as many of those jurisdictional issues with the county, right? They're just that jagged edge out east that we all know about. But pockets within the city, not so much county properties that we have to deal with. But no, they don't have, not that I'm aware, they have some sort of response, I'm just not as familiar with it, but they don't have dedicated HST officers like we do.
Right. And do you know if ODOT has any?
ODOT has a team that, backed up by OSP, right? I don't know if they're dedicated full-time like ours are, but they do have cleanup crews partnered with law enforcement officers to do the cleanups, yes.
Right. And I think, you know, for my colleagues up here, I think that's where, I think we just have to educate ourselves even more so, because if the county does have something, and if ODOT also has something, it's like, how do we get everyone on the same page to fix the same concern? Because I know in Word 5, that there are several pockets where the land is not ours. The land is ODOT's. And when you see the encampments, it is horrific. And that's a mild way of saying it. I'm not going to give any addresses, but the concern is huge, because it's not only the folks who are living in the encampments, but you also have residents. Residents that are 50 feet away from the encampments. And so there is a concern there of people that could be in harm's way. And so it's, again, it's a conversation, Madam Mayor, and to my colleagues, is just, we have to find a way to elevate the conversation to make sure that those entities, whether it's the county or even the state, that they are part of the conversation also, and when it comes to money and paying for it. Because we can't pay for it all. And so at the end of the day, yes, we're in the capital of seating, yes, we've got a lot of issues, but those two entities have to be at the table with us. So, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Matthews?
Well, Chief, you saw my metrics and my measurements and my outcomes, you saw all that coming, so you kind of addressed a lot of it in the very beginning.
Right.
But I did have a question. So what is the best way to measure success? You know, to Council Brown's point, how this gets judged is by how many encampments we see. And I think that a lot of people feel like downtown, to some degree, looks better than it did a few years ago, still not, obviously, where people want it. But northeast Salem, as Council Brown was saying, when he and I drove through there the other day, Hawthorne has encampments all the way through, and I get that that's ODOT property there, and eventually, ODOT will move them off, and then they'll come into Salem property, and you'll kind of play this whole game again. But how do we measure it, then? Because I think the pick count said, which is, again, not an effective way to measure either, that we had a 9% increase in homelessness. So how do we know we're being successful?
We are trying ourselves, and DC Aguilar can speak a little more to it, but we even created our own little dashboard. We kind of track the encampments that we visit, we know where the, kind of the hotspots are, and the number of encampments that we have, at least from the known reports and the things we're dealing with, just so we can make prior decisions also. But yeah, it's very hard to get an accurate account on unsheltered mobile population. It's a challenge. And I do think the measuring, again, this is why I started off by saying, I'm not talking about a solution to homelessness. For me, a solution to homelessness would be no more people living on the streets. That's not what I'm talking about at all, right? We're just managing and mitigating the public safety issues right now, while hopefully, somebody else is going to figure that out, because I can't. And so that would be my measure of success within that scope, is that it is a safer environment for everybody involved, there is less visibility of unmanaged, you know, debris and unhealthy conditions. And we can measure some of that with SOS too, as far as the tons and tons of debris that they're removing. You know, let's double the team, you're going to double that amount, probably. And so there are some outcomes you're going to see, which is less visibility for our community. That livability piece, I think, will improve. That's what we're after. But again, it's hard to say, to me, the best outcome would be to track somebody through the system, and they actually got a house, and they got it taken care of, right? And they've improved their lives. That's just not the realm I live in, right? So I have to just deal with managing the problem right now, which is real and you can't ignore. So our outcomes are going to be like, how much debris did we remove? How many contacts did we make? How many people do we connect to services? That's going to be our outcomes, because that's where my resources and expertise and authority ends.
So let me ask a question, and one more, sorry. So I guess, in kind of that whole thought of, you know, homeless services team, by definition, sort of has to be reactive, right? It reacts to the camp. The SOS team also reactive. It reacts to, we're removing a camp, and now we have to clean it up. These are all reactive services. None, you know, we kind of use the word proactive sometimes, but I'm not sure they really are defined correctly there. And so, and we're going to talk about, a little about this later on tonight, but, so for me, when I'm looking at proactivity, I keep hearing, obviously, there's a lot of things that kind of lead into the homeless aspect, and what causes someone to be homeless, everything from economic factors. But one thing I continue to hear about, and kind of is in your purview, is drugs, right? And so, and particularly for me, I get that the addict is oftentimes the person that's the victim, but it's really the distributor that's causing the bigger aspect. And so where does that play in to kind of your role in being able to hold that distributor accountable?
Yeah, so we have a little slide on this topic.
So it's coming.
Later, I think if we...
Didn't mean to jump there, we can wait.
No, I think if that's fair, because we're going to talk about kind of a multi-pronged approach to that too, so.
Sorry?
No, no problem.
I'm looking forward to that discussion, too. Councilor Matthews, thanks for bringing it up. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'll remember to advance the slide now, this time. Come on in, Gretchen. So finally, over the past few months, we have been talking about the SOS team not able to fully meet the demand for services, and also the need to explain, expand this program. So before Gretchen gets into the details on what we are trying to accomplish through this initiative, I just want to take a minute to kind of acknowledge the work that Gretchen and the team have been doing, is, as a city, not necessarily just with this particular program, but that we are working very hard to find alignment between different programs the city has, and also how we can efficiently serve the community with a greater impact. And one of the pieces is engaging employees and understanding, like, where the actual need is, and trying to get some ideas through the employee engagement. And Gretchen has been working very hard with her team, especially on the parks, with the Parks Department. And I had the opportunity to go for a ride-along with Ruben, I think, a week ago. It was just definitely a good experience, and I'm also kind of trying to engage with employees, asking, okay, what do they think that we need to do? So it's kind of interesting to see from their perspective and the suggestions that they are giving us. So I want to kind of acknowledge Gretchen for the good work that's happening there. So Gretchen, if you can go ahead and talk about the program details, that would be great.
Thank you so much. My name is Gretchen Bennett. I'm Acting In Capacity Community Services Director. And Clean Salem would go from four to seven days a week, in this case, adding an additional 24 hours. I think this would decrease wait times to challenging areas, and we'd be able to focus more on areas of high sustained need through the weeks, including in such as downtown and the corridors in northeast Salem that were described. I think, in my view, a clean Salem contributes to multiple high-level outcomes. If you're a person who experiences unsheltered homelessness, and you have trash that needs to be tossed, it is helpful when we can take that quickly. If you're a person who is aiming to visit an area, whether it's a park, or maybe a shopping district, it is helpful to your livability to have trash not all about. When we have illegal dumping from housed neighbors, it is helpful if we can get there quickly and get that removed before it's strewn all over. So I know, I'm interested, to Krishna's point about our employee engagement, to engage with our employees on specifically what could be tracked in terms of higher-level outcomes, because I'm confident that this output of removing trash makes a difference in a person's agency. I recall working with Salem Housing Authority with people who were taking the steps towards becoming eligible for housing, and they were unsheltered. And as a part of that, being able to gather trash and have that go away is a step of agency that that person can take that prepares for that next step of coming into a home. I know that, I've talked with people in our business community, real estate developers, for example, who are aiming to sell or lease a property, and if we can get trash removed quickly, I have a hunch that that will improve the outcome of ultimately being able to welcome more people into Salem. So I'm really looking forward to some future, and next step from me is further engagement with my fellow employees and community members around what high-level outcomes could we track? So if you imagine this on a logic model, we know this action will contribute in these ways. The funds that would be provided for Clean Salem would cover the people, equipment, disposal fees, and the fuel that would be necessary for us to come to seven days a week. Maybe I'll just end with just underscoring the partnership and the embeddedness that we all are in with our larger system. I think these high-level outcomes are one that we share, you know, with our partners around the homeless alliance table, our other governmental jurisdictions, our other key partners in the nonprofit and public sectors, where together, we're each contributing components of the work that we do towards that broader objective.
Any questions for Gretchen?
Yeah, Councilor Nordick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and Gretchen, thank you. I know you are one of our tireless and most committed employees at the city that I've ever seen. I have seen you engage with residents who are struggling with mental health all the time, including earlier this week, and you always do it with compassion and in a trauma-informed way. So thank you. That's a lot.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. When we're talking about a cleaning program expansion, what does that actually mean? Are you talking about more SOS employees, or something else?
More SOS team. We would work as we do now, but go from four to seven days per week.
Okay, thank you. And one of the things that I have been talking to Krishna and our nonprofits on, there is a really great proposal that's come forward from Church of the Park. They have this Clean Start program, and under that program, they would be able to supplement our SOS. And what I like about that is, first of all, they would be able to hire unsheltered persons to do the work. So you create workforce development opportunities for people who need some money in their pocket. There's also an opportunity to potentially work with those who've been convicted felons. And as someone who's worked with a lot of prisoners in the Department of Corrections, I know that a lot of those folks, when they get out, if they can get a job within their first six months, they might never see prison again. So there's so many opportunities to reduce recidivism by hiring felons to clean up trash. And then also, what I like about that is that it's, it could be pretty economical to hire, to hire them to do that, too. So I see that as a win-win, and I've met with DJ at Church of the Park. I'm excited about the prospect of us working with them on that. Have you had an opportunity to engage with Church of the Park about this program?
Thank you, yes. I am familiar with the program, and impressed with the components that you're describing, for sure. I know what brought us forward, a couple of pieces, and one is the urgency or the priority with the team that we have of being able to retain it and sustain it. The funding for this particular team is slated to end, and so first, trying to keep and sustain and get to the seven days a week of the team that we have was the priority that we brought to you this evening. I would add that the team is also situated to handle the technical aspects of the work. Although we do help in alleys, sidewalks, parks, we also go way, we scale way up trees that are tall, and we scale down the pedestrian bridge, and down the river embankments, and into areas that are technical in nature, and we appreciate the ability to access the different types of equipment and the skilled work in some of the more complicated areas. So this is what we brought this evening.
Councilor Matthews?
Gosh, I'm talking a lot tonight. Question, so I guess I was just trying to work out the math. So I guess I didn't realize it was going to go to seven days a week, but I think that makes sense, since HST is also going to be seven days a week. But I think we had gotten some data that the daily cost for these cleanup crews is somewhere between $2,800 on the low end and $9,400 on the high end per day. And if I take that and expand over 365 days, that far exceeds the $400,000 that's kind of being attributed right now to this team. And so I'm not sure, how does that work?
Nice work on the math, Council Matthews, you're doing great. But what we're bringing this evening actually reflects a six-month expansion and a three-day-per-week addition.
Okay, gotcha. So it's not the holistic number of what it's going to cost to go to seven, it's just the addition is what's going to cost.
That's correct. We're talking about the addition.
Okay, got it.
Councilor Vang, did you have something?
I did, thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions. When we're talking about expanding the Clean Salem program and cleanliness, is the department looking at not only the SOS team, but other ways to ensure that Salem, especially downtown and northeast Salem, is clean in terms of public restrooms, or making trash cans more available? Is that part of the expansion that the department is looking at, or kind of how are we envisioning the expansion?
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think restrooms is coming up in a later slide, and I'll be back up on that for a bit. This particular component is narrowly focused... This particular component is narrowly focused on, you know, outreach trash removal component that we've been discussing. Agreed, all of those things are elements of a clean Salem.
Okay, thank you. And again, I feel like all the councilors are just jumping around, so I appreciate the patience.
Councilor Nishioke?
Thank you, and thank you Gretchen. Again, as always, you do such great work and everybody that works with you, so thank you to everyone. I think, too, the math that Councilor Matthews is suggesting, we're talking about two SOS team for the six months, basically salary and the support that they would need within that salary. That doesn't include, this amount doesn't include the additional cost of the trash and its process of getting hauled to Coffin Butte. So I think we need to make sure that we're not getting that confused with the cost of the actual material and the flow of it.
Councilor Nishioke, thank you for bringing that up, because you're right, there's multiple costs. The proposal before you this evening for the six months, and if you just look at the six-month short-term accomplishment that's proposed, the estimate on the board was $250,000. And we estimated the staffing component of that to be $120,000. We would have only a bit of equipment necessary, which would come in at about $16,000. We estimate the growth in disposal fees to come to about $20,000. And we did keep, we currently have contracted services. One of the things that we did was issue a request for proposals last spring, and we have a current contracted service that helps us boost in certain areas. And we were estimating around a $40,000 growth in the contracted services for that area, too. And this is what we could do right away to help deliver in the short term, working with our existing contractor on record that had come out of the request for proposal process, and basically expanding what we have right now. This was the way to more quickly get to goal.
Thank you for that further explanation of the breakdown, thanks.
Councilor Brown?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Director Bennett, appreciate you as always and what your team is doing, especially when it comes to cleanliness, that's not easy. So here's my question, or more or less a thought. You know, we have neighborhood associations, and is there a way for us to utilize our neighborhood associations at a, I'd say on a deeper level, maybe, when it comes to cleanliness? I know the Highland Neighborhood Association that I share with Councilor Tigan, you know, we have gone out in the communities and, you know, we pick up trash, right? Bought our trash bags, went out there, put our vest on, and we start picking up trash. Here's an idea, and definitely pushback on it. Is that an idea that we can share with other neighborhood associations? And you know how sometimes you can adopt a part of a highway? It's almost like adopting a part of the city. Obviously, you know, Ward Five is huge, so we'll probably adopt a lot of folks from Councilor Matthews' ward to come and help us when it comes to picking up trash. So thank you, Councilor Matthews.
Councilor Brown, Councilor Dr. Brown, thank you for mentioning that. That was a topic that just came up in an employee engagement discussion that Krishna was mentioning. As you mentioned, we have an Adopt a Street program. And how can we leverage people who have a heart for helping make Salem cleaner? We want to work through appropriate questions around safety and liability that we're thinking about for some of the more dangerous items to pick up, but that's, that's something that we're looking at.
Yeah, thank you, Director Bennett. I have to be formal, sorry I called you Gretchen, but... So I just want to kind of add something to this. So there's a lot of stuff happening right now, and, you know, we'll be coming to the council with more formal report on it. So Dr. Brown, I was at the Neighborhood Association meeting when they talked about, you know, them being engaged with the Clean Salem program. So that's, you know, we did discuss that opportunity to bring the neighborhood associations together, the community engagement, employee engagement, and how do we kind of take this Clean Salem initiative forward? I think this is where we can really leverage the passion and the commitment that we have from the community. We also, I don't want to forget this, but we also are talking about, you know, we have public works, parks, and SOS, and there is a certain level of alignment and coordination. I think there is an opportunity for improvement there, so we talked about that. And then as we are getting that results from the employee engagement survey, there are, a lot of employees are talking about the amount of time it takes to be, you know, cleaning parks. And some of them have really great ideas about how to reduce the time we spend in cleaning parks. So there is, there are those initiatives that are happening. So, so there's a lot of good work, so I'm hoping that we can bring neighborhood associations and the community, engage them in this initiative.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, and thank you, Director Bennett. And I appreciate that tremendously, because it's, it's easy for me to, you know, to walk downtown, Ward One, and I see trash. It's easy for me to take a picture of it and send it to Ward One and say, hey, your ward sucks, clean it up, right? It's easy for me to do that. But, and we have too much of that. It would be, it would be more, I should say, more inclusive if I saw the trash, decided to say, you know what, I'm going to pick this up, I'm going to pick it, nobody else is here, no one's going to pat me on the back, Irvin, pick up the trash and keep, keep it moving, right? And so when we think about, you know, livability in our, in our, in our city, so many business owners, so many veterans, retirees, you name it, it's easier if we decide to say, you know what, we're in this together, regardless of what ward you're in, let's like, let's just do this, instead of this, let's just try this. And the very fact that this is already on you all's agenda, I love it, so thank you.
Councilor Tigan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think as we get to the end of this part of the conversation, I suppose the clean, safe, and healthy Salem, what I really appreciate from just a policymaking perspective, what the city staff have brought us tonight is, you know, I don't think that there's anyone in our community who believes that these issues are four-day-a-week issues, right? These are seven-day-a-week issues. They're seven days a week in, in all the wards and across the whole city. And I don't think it's been a, the opinion of the city staff or even the, the city council before this, that we'll do this four days a week and let it rest for three and then come back. It's always been a question of resources and whether we had the ability to direct a seven-day-a-week approach to both the HST and the SOS, right? So I, I fully support moving these forward and to the community health response as well. I think that, Dr. Brown has said it earlier in the meeting, that with this comes a bit of an expectation, that people will see a different outcome and they'll, they'll see it soon. And I think that's going to, part of the onus of what we're trying to describe to the community of what we're doing is saying, we're going to go from a, you know, we've been very fortunate to have a four-day approach, and we're going to take a seven-day approach and, and see the difference. I think this last element that just came up about asking the community for help, these are professional-level problems. I think, you know, Director Bennett said it, you know, like we've got people rappelling into Mill Creek out in front of my house in order to get things out of it. So we don't want people to hurt themselves, liability, as the mayor said to begin with. But, but I do think that, you know, as we move into the coming year, if we're, if we have a seven-day of response on this sort of thing, then that, to me, feels like the right place to be asking the community for help. Not like, hey, we can cover four, can you do the three? But no, we've got a team on this the entire week, week in, week out, and if we want to ask community members for their help in the parks and things like after that, then that makes sense to me, too.
Councilor Nishioke?
Thank you. I'll simply add to this, I know that, and my guess is, other councilors have also been approached by people offering, may I, may I go ahead and pick up trash? And I try to explain to them that, you know, yes, but you have to realize that even the neighborhood associations that get the support, they get support making sure that they have the proper equipment and, and the right mechanisms to make sure that nobody is injured and there isn't any liability, along with livability. And, and so I think that for all of those that have offered, I just want to say thank you very much, and just recognize that it, it's maybe not as easy picking up pieces of paper or wrappers, there's much to be involved. And, and so I just want to ensure that they, make sure they take the right steps so that they don't get themselves harmed.
You know, just kind of on a personal experience note, I was with the HST team when the Claggett Creek cleanup was taking place. And striking to me was approaching one particular camp, and they'd been given the notice in advance that everybody needed to move. When we showed up at a particular camp, the couple inside were, were getting high, like right then and there. And we waited a bit and then approached and told them we'd be back in a couple of hours, but they really, this was the time and they needed to leave. When we came back, they were definitely high, and the only thing they wanted out of all of their collection of things was the giant white vinyl couch. It just didn't make sense, you know, and I, but I understand that they could, they're not, they're not capable in that state of thinking about what's really important or what's really going to help them when they get to the next place. Came around a couple hours later and it was another 50 yards into the woods, and they just didn't want to leave the couch. So I think another, another point I want to bring up Gretchen, or sorry, Director Bennett, in the meeting we had this week, there was a, would you call it a graph, about the amount of trash by month? And I think it's important just to acknowledge that trash gets heavier with rain, so the expense goes up in the winter months and spring. So, thank you. Anyone else? Great job Gretchen, I mean, Director Bennett, thank you.
Thank you. So I would like for Josh to come to the podium and just kind of walk us through the sequence of steps that need to happen from the budget side.
Good evening, Josh Ingleson, Chief Franch Officer. I'll be very brief this evening, so the, there, there's a few things listed on this slide. The first of which we spoke about on Monday is a Budget Committee meeting on October 22nd, where we'll be giving the Budget Committee an update on this discussion and potential budget changes. You'll have an opportunity for additional discussion on October 27th. I've listed December 8th as when you would actually see a budget amendment. So at that time, we'd have identified funding, identified budget changes, we'd bring them to you for your consideration, with the intent that they'd be effective January 1st. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Did you, would you like it repeated?
Yes, I was trying to type and I did not listen as closely as I should have. Please.
Absolutely, and I'll slow down. So October 22nd, you should have seen an appointment today for a Budget Committee meeting. So we'll be giving the full Budget Committee, the full 18 members, including the newest member appointed earlier this month, an update on this discussion, some of the things you heard on Monday, and we'll also give them an update on the, this safety and livability proposal also. You'll have some opportunity for discussion on October 22nd, and then we'll bring you the final budget adjustment. Not sure at this point if it's a contingency transfer or a supplemental budget, it kind of depends on what pieces are there, but we'll bring that to you on December 8th for your consideration, with the idea that it would be effective January 1st. And I want to be careful, effective doesn't mean that the services will be in place, but just that the funding will be in place for them.
Thank you.
And Councilor Matthews?
So to that last kind of point you just made, that effective doesn't mean it'll start, everything happens slower in government, I'm learning that, but is there a way to expedite, I mean, from the October 27th to the December 8th, is there a way to expedite that council discussion earlier so that it can actually start with employees on January 1?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, and I might defer to interim city manager. I think one consideration is some of the funding sources we're looking at, as we're trying to get more history. So one of the challenges will be is if we'll have that or not by that point. But I'll, I'll defer to Krishna if she wants to add anything.
I don't have anything to add to that, so you're good.
Councilor Brown?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Greetings, Mr. CFO. Question for you, and I don't know if it's a question for you, but it's definitely maybe in your wheelhouse. Madam Mayor, she mentioned a really spectacular point about trash, and I know there are some of the councilors, we sit on the solid waste committee team. Is there a way that when we do come back next month, that we can share with the community just how much we're spending on trash? Just so folks can know that this is not like, oh, yeah, we got this, but it's a significant number. Is there a way that we can share that with the public, just so we can just elevate that?
Specifically related to the SOS team's activities? Yeah, that's certainly something we can bring back. Would you just like the information out there, or would you, information important to City Council?
Well, I'm flexible. I mean, if you tell us, I just want to be able to repeat it to people, because sometimes I do think that's overlooked, because I know they want us to fix this, fix this, fix this, but there's a cost to fixing anything, and when we pick up the trash, that's not just a free resource. That does come out of a budget.
Yeah, we can certainly bring that back.
Thank you, sir.
Councilor Nishioke?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Ingleson, for bringing this forward. I know that the information on revenue from the parking will be coming to us in January, so will you be making some assumptions on that, because some of this might be supported by revenue from parking, some of these programs?
Thank you, counselor. The plan is, when, when we are looking at the near-term package, and I'm hoping that by October, we know exactly how we are going to end the general fund. So I did talk about, there is an additional fund balance that we might see there, and then we use that fund balance for the pilot program that we are looking at. I am hesitant to talk about what we can commit out of the paid parking and EMS fund right now, but we will have a better idea when we meet in January to, to, to see how those two funds are performing. The long-term solution is where I recommend attaching a fund source to it. So then we can talk about, okay, the, the, the package costs like $2.75 million, how much can we be taking out of EMS? And there is some amount that has to come out of paid parking, and I want to kind of reiterate, paid parking is kind of within the downtown area, so the part of it is, could be from that. And then we would know more about the opioid settlements, and so, so, so that's kind of the long-term plan. But for the near-term, my recommendation is to look into general fund and how we are doing there, and use those additional dollar amount towards that.
And, and thank you, and that explains why it said on the earlier slides, general fund, general fund, general fund. Thanks.
Councilor Nordic?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Josh, I'm so excited to see our Budget Committee reconvening on October 22nd, because I, I had even emailed you, because I saw the calendar invite come in, and I just emailed you recently, so I think you've had a chance to look at it yet, but I wanted to know what we would be talking about. And it sounds to me like what we're going to be talking about on October 22nd is how, whether and how we fund all the things we've talked about tonight, is part of that agenda, right?
Certainly a component. We'll give an update there, also how we ended the general fund, or the, sorry, fiscal year 2025, and we're hopeful at that point we'll have an update on the actual, the tax rules will be certified hopefully by the county. update on the actual, the tax rules will be certified hopefully by the county. We'll have an idea about the local option levy, and how much fun, funding we'll generate from that.
That'll be great. Madam Mayor, I do have a couple follow-ups. So one of the things I, and the reason why I wanted to ask you that is that before I was a counselor, I was on Budget Committee. I served with Counselor Tigan before he was a counselor himself. So I know what it's like to be a public member of the Budget Committee. And I think I started serving in like 2017. So I've been at this a while. And, you know, everything we've been talking about tonight are things that I, as a public Budget Committee member, would want to weigh in on. And that was one of the things that really got me excited about getting involved in our city. Because to me, if it's not on the budget, it doesn't exist. It's just nice ideas, it's thoughts, it's a concept of a plan. But when it's actually in the budget, that's when you know it's actually going to happen. So I think it's of the utmost importance that when we're talking about whether and how to fund things like our homeless services team, we need Budget Committee input on that. And all the sources of revenue, where, where are our sources of revenue coming from? And how do we spend that? I feel that that's not just a council decision, that's a Budget Committee decision. So I think it's really important we talk about it. And one thing to keep in mind, talking about the paid parking, earlier this week, we talked about what that monthly income might be. And it's extremely speculative so far, because we only have two months of data. But it might be, just based on a potential back of the, back of the napkin estimate that the staff provided, it might be $175,000 a month, potentially. Again, only two months, July and August. If it was $175,000 a month, that would be 2.1 million a year. And we could use some of that funding, as suggested by staff in these reports tonight. We could use some of the paid parking fund towards this cleanliness program. And I feel like that would be one of many great potential uses. But the, the Church of the Park program that I mentioned, in the information they gave me, the annual operating expense of running this program seven days a week, cleaning coordination, that's just under four full-time employees, includes their own dumping fees, supplies, fuel and vehicle maintenance. They say they can do that for $345,000. So we could take $345,000 out of 2.1 million and still have over 1.7 million available for other uses. But again, these are only back of the napkin calculations. We don't know yet if parking revenue will continue at this clip over the winter months. But I wanted to start my peers and any, anyone watching at home to start thinking about how we might be able to really capitalize on these resources to make our downtown as good as it can be. So that's just some food for thought. And I'm hopeful that when Budget Committee meets on the 22nd, we'll have the month of September's data from the paid parking fund as well. So we can start getting a more accurate picture slowly, but surely over time.
Christian Ambery?
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to take that. The first, talking about the Budget Committee involvement, I think I did make the statement in my presentation, we don't, we do not want to be ahead of the Budget Committee. It's very important that this goes through the process. This discussion is great. I think it allows us to understand where the council is, and if the council is in alignment with the proposal. So I'm glad that we are going to meet on October 22nd. So on our side, it is very intentional to not to kind of forget about the process. So thank you for mentioning that. I appreciate it. And going back to the, and the comment about the, you know, I think I met with DJ Vincent today, like Gretchen and I met with him this afternoon. I think, you know, what they're trying to do is great, like, you know, but also we talked about that is, that doesn't replace the SOS program, right? Like, and when I say that, there is a need to expand that SOS to seven days a week. The proposal that we, that you see from Church at the Park is a supplement to that, right? So, and then the other piece is, right now, we do not have that in the Strategic Action Plan as a package. But if the council chooses to move forward with that, then we have to go through the RFP process and the regular process to kind of see and allow people to bid on it. And it's kind of, you're aware of it. I just wanted to make sure that I mention that. So there is more to come to have the discussion in October.
I agree with all that, City Manager. Thank you.
Counselor Varney, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me, because my connection's a little bad. Anyway, I just wanted to confirm, after looking back at a couple of slides, that when the Budget Committee meets on October 22nd, currently, we're looking at a total cost for this near-term planning of about $650,000. And under, it says fund sources, general fund, and then outside sources. And my question is, and I'm sure this will be covered at the Budget Committee meeting, but what are those outside sources? And kind of what proportion do they make up of the total of the 650,000?
I'll take that. Thank you, Counselor. So when we kind of listed the other fund sources there, as you're aware, I sent an email on Sunday that Chamber and some of the, came forward to us with a proposal to fund two HST officers or $360,000. We're still trying to figure out the details of it. So if that, if the council accepts that gift, then part of that 650 could come from that. So that is what the other fund sources there. So, but we will be talking about that, I think, at the Budget Committee meeting or the, the next opportunity that we get. We don't have the complete details on that to have a discussion tonight.
Okay, thank you. I just was trying to verify what it was. Thank you.
Counselor Tigan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I guess I would just like to offer a slightly contrary view about this schedule. And I appreciate its thoughtfulness and not wanting to get ahead of the Budget Committee. And as Counselor Nordak said, we're with others, former resident members. But we also have discretion as a council to change the budget up to a certain amount without going back to the Budget Committee. And the amount that we're talking about is well under that. My interest would be seeing these programs that we've talked about tonight as a policy response to the current state of the city, is to make them happen as soon as possible, so we could have as much information when we go to the Budget Committee next spring and say, hey, we want $2.7 million for this next year. If we follow this timeline, we'll be ready to spend the money on January 1st, but we won't have the people in place. And it'll take time to spin it up. And then by the time we're at the Budget Committee for next year, saying we have a $2.7 million idea, we'll have, I don't know, a month of data, a month and a half of impression about what the impact of the program was. And so I feel like the gift that the community has given us in order to expand the HSS, the HS team, the amount that's been identified, I'm the first person to not want to spend money we don't have. But I think we have the amount of money it would take to do this. And I think we want to game out this as much as possible before we make the decision to go, you know, $3 million more dollars into it.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. That's certainly a possibility up to council direction. I should note it, it would likely increase the dollar amount if you're starting sooner. Not necessarily depending on how long it takes to hire people, but just one consideration.
So if I may, Counselor, the way I understood was, if you have to start the program on January 1st, it's good for the staff to get some direction sooner than later, so that we can have staff availability to start the program, right? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, they're not corollaries, but we, we declared an emergency about our water situation, so we could spend money in 12 months instead of 18 months. I feel like the, the amount of response time it's going to take to get something going is much shorter here than drilling four wells at Garen Island and like that. And so I feel like we should move with the, I feel like this, what I'm hearing is this council wants to see this implemented and see what the result is. And so I feel like, I can't give you that direction, but I can just give you the sense that I think we should move as quickly as we can.
I think it will be great to see what the rest of the council feels about it. And not necessarily you're going to, you know, vote on that tonight, but they'll be, we'll come to the council floor again. But it'll be great to see if there is, you know, how the rest of the council members feel.
Counselor Nishioke?
I would strongly agree with that. See if we could move it up. And I recognize that it might be a month or six weeks of more cost than we're anticipating. But at the same time, I think there is a call out, and I think all of us do want to see some actionable things being able to happen. So I would encourage maybe trying to move that up, or at least have the staff getting ready a little sooner.
Counselor Vane? I agree with Counselor Tigan and Nishioke's sentiment about trying to implement these solutions sooner rather than later. And if that means we can move up this timeline, and we have the discretion to be able to do that, I would love to have that opportunity to do so. We've talked about these solutions, especially the co-pilot response, for a very long time now. And we see the solutions, we know the pathway to get there. And I think it would, I think it would be best if we could start taking steps to get there. And so I agree with Counselor Tigan and Nishioke's sentiment about, let's try to move these solutions forward into reality. Thank you.
Well, I'll just add, I'm grateful again for the forecast that we received on Monday night. That was good news. And I feel like gives us a little breathing room here. Counselor Nishioke?
Thank you. I'm just going to ask, do we need a motion of direction? Where you're okay with just hearing? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not going to go through this slide, but just wanted to kind of remind, this is something that we talked about. The long-term vision is to building that sustainable safety and livability services. And I'm so glad that we are making some kind of progress on this. So with the, in the previous council meetings, there were two areas that, that we, I heard from the council that there is interest to have further conversations about public restrooms and the drug prevention and enforcement. But also, I kind of remind the council that these are the two areas that we don't have a funding strategy for. And so we are seeking more direction on like, you know, kind of having that conversation so that as we are moving forward, we figure out the next step. So I'm not, we're not committing anything to this because there is no funding strategy attached to it at this point. But I think it's important to have conversation on both. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with Director Bennett.
Good evening. Right now, we're doing an analysis of current restrooms that we have at the request of the Infrastructure Bond Committee earlier. We're looking carefully at the different types. We've got chemical toilets in our parks, some parks. We have hard brick and mortar restrooms. And then we have the single-user restroom model not yet in Salem. So we're doing an analysis of these three different types right now, and bringing that information back to the Bond Steering Committee for their review and discussion on September 25th. Another thing that's underway is, we're preparing McKay Park to welcome in two of the single-user restrooms. And in this case, the acquisition is from Portland Lou. Once installed, we would then be able to begin to see how those work and function for people in Salem. So we're looking forward to experiencing this model too.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The pilot's pilot sidewalk restroom, what's the estimated cost of that?
Oh, I should have brought that and I didn't. I, we have it. I can bring that back.
Okay. And I would just like to add myself to the chorus of, let's get to work on these proposals sooner rather than later. So I wholeheartedly agree with that. I just wanted to echo that sentiment.
Counselor Nishioke?
Thank you, to help you out Gretchen. I believe that the Portland Lou itself was like, maybe just under $100,000. But it really depended upon the site and the work that needed to be done on the site. So it would be dependent on the site. So that's what I remember from our discussion at the Bond Committee. And I think that the, the ones that are being done in McKay, I think some of that infrastructure was there, but maybe not all of it, so.
Counselor Nishioke, you're absolutely right. I saw a more recent costing of the Lou that was higher than the amount that we had, we had been working with before. And I don't have enough detail to understand, is that, what's reflected in that? If it's a different type or a different time that the cost was checked? But yeah, that's, everything you're saying is correct. There's costs in preparing the pad and bringing in the utilities in addition to the user restroom itself.
It will be site-dependent.
Counselor Varney, I see your hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is regarding the information on the restrooms going to the Bond Committee. I'm assuming that will be primarily infrastructure costs, which are, you know, the pad and the structure itself. But my question is, when will there be a discussion about the cost and a plan for maintenance and monitoring of these facilities?
So thank you, Counselor. The, the plan is first like for the staff to take this information to the Bond Steering Committee. And then we will be coming to one of the council meetings with information report on, on this. Because I know in the past, we did have, like, tried different models. And I would like to bring that report to the council for further discussion, including the infrastructure costs and the maintenance cost and the staff cost associated with it. So in one of the future council meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tigan?
I think we, I think we refer to that as the Dixon Rule, based on our, our good colleague on the Budget Committee, Bill Dixon.
That's great.
Director Martin is here. And he just texted me saying that he has some information on the construction costs. Maybe if he can give a little bit on that.
While he's making his way forward, I just want to add, I found the discussion about the restrooms interesting in the meeting, and the fact that there are so many different options when it comes to design. And super important, I think, to, to consider what is going to be most safe and most effective in our, in our park.
Good evening, Brian Martin, Public Works Director. We looked at two different estimates. So a Portland Lou, which is not self-cleaning but has other elements that are beneficial, the base cost in a site without utilities is about $260,000. There's another brand, which is called an Urban Blue, that actually is a self-cleaning restroom. It comes out and cleans itself. That cost is about $361,000. And so when you ask, why is it so expensive? It's not just the cost of the restroom, it's the cost of installation. Gretchen mentioned the foundation. There's also utilities, so we need to get water, sewer and power to the facilities. And, you know, by the time you add that all up, that costs quite a bit of money.
Counselor Nishioke?
Thank you. And Director Martin, thank you for bringing And Director Martin, thank you for bringing up the Urban Blue. As you know, I sent you all kinds of information on comparisons of the two. I think, too, what I was trying to recognize, and I'm sure that your department will be reviewing, is the potential reduction in cost of maintenance, and whether or not it's the Portland Lou or the Urban Blue, or comparatively to the cost of maintenance for the brick-and-mortar that you have already in some of the parks. And so hopefully, some of that information will be coming, not only on the infrastructure costs, but just having us have an understanding of where there might be a cost savings on maintenance for any of them, or what that would require. And I know that they each have different opportunities, such as locking mechanisms so that it's... So that somebody doesn't have to come and physically lock it at the end of the day, that it can be done electronically, but that increases the cost of the unit, but it decreases the amount of cost of staff time. So there will be a lot of comparisons that we'll need to be looking at. But again, part of it is site-specific, and one may not fit all places. I think I have that right.
I don't know about city staff, but Councilor Nishiyoka, you might hold the lead for the most research done on the Portland Lou or that guy. Definitely. Yes, Councilor Vang.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Nishiyoka, I appreciate all of the research that you've done. I appreciate staff coming and letting us know kind of some rough numbers about the cost of public restrooms. And, you know, as we've discussed, the livability issues surrounding downtown and northeast Salem, cleanliness has continued to be a topic of concern and raised as a priority. And so I'm glad that in the Strategic Action Plan, the city has identified that, including neighborhood associations, including residents, as part of the conversation. I'm glad to see that as part of the plan. And I think that helps us create a more balanced solution, and kind of trying to figure out where do we put our priorities. And this conversation about cleanliness highlights, as Councilor Nishiyoka mentions, access to public restrooms. And how do we make that possible? Is it even within our budgets? Because it costs money. And so I appreciate city staff coming and letting us know the information. I also think that damage to these facilities is a concern, and safety is a concern. And so I reached out to the police department, the fire department, and our parks operations to really see kind of what the data says, because I want to make sure that I make a data-informed decision when we come to public restrooms or any of these solutions. And going back to 2013, Salem Police Department responded to one incident involving fire damage to a porta potty at Marion Square Park. And so as we move forward, I want to make sure that we address damage issues and concerns that can come up with public restrooms. But I like that we are exploring different types of restrooms that can be safe, that are durable, and can be sustained long-term when we're able to find funding for it. And so I... I'm glad that this is part of the conversation, and I want to continue to explore solutions about public restrooms and making that part of the whole package, as our city manager said at the top of the hour. So it's more of a comment than a question, really. So I appreciate everyone listening to me and my thoughts. So thank you.
Is anyone in need of a break? Should we take five minutes? Do you have a question first? Okay.
Just because we're still on the restroom thing, I guess now is the time to ask. But so, yeah, in the restroom. So I guess my question is, and Councilor Vang kind of brought this up, with we've only had one fire incident, it sounds like, in those restrooms. What are the challenges, right? I mean, I think we all can see like, some of the benefits to having a restroom. Obviously, I think logically, I can see where there's going to be challenges of camping, there's going to be challenges of different... I mean, obviously, I've already talked about drugs once, I'm kind of waiting for that aspect of the conversation. But I guess I'm asking, where are we seeing the challenges and the burdens that could hinder this problem?
So, Councilor Matthews, if I may. Councilor Vang, thank you so much for kind of bringing that data, that you're absolutely right about the police data. And this is something that we internally are talking about. When the calls come in, some calls come to police, some calls come to fire, and some calls come to parks and public works. And so we, as a city, don't have a good system that where we can say, hey, these are all the calls that we have received around it. We kind of acknowledge that as an issue, and thank you so much for bringing that question forward to us, because that kind of made us kind of take a step back and say, hey, we need to coordinate better and have that one response from every department. So as we are kind of trying to figure out how to get that, all the calls that come in around it, so we should be able... We should be looking into the data and the past. And also, there is a lot of technology-wise, a lot of change, so there are more opportunities now than before. So my preference is when we bring this topic to the council for discussion, I think we should be able to bring the data, hopefully, and then what happened in the past and the history with it, and then also the new technology that we have today. And so I think that combination of that is probably what determines how to move forward. So if it's okay with you, that can we postpone that question to the next time when we come to the council? Thank you.
Councilor Brown.
And this may be one to postpone also. Director Martin, and please, no need to come up here. So the amount that this is going to cost us, does this come out of your budget from your team, or is this straight out of the general fund? When it comes to not only purchasing the toilets, but the maintenance of them? Is that our budget? So again, everything is expensive.
If nothing further, it would have been really cool to roll a Lou in, you know, but, oh, well, let's take five minutes, and we'll come back for the last slide.[1055.47]
Entrum City Manager Nambury. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I almost forgot that I was presenting tonight. So, really good discussion, though. The second topic of interest that you had was around drug prevention and enforcement. And so tonight, we have three speakers. And each of them will talk about drug prevention. And the second speaker will cover the treatment side of it and then enforcement. So we'll begin with Lori Shaw. I don't know. She's here. So she's, Lori Shaw is at Outreach and Education Coordinator. Lori, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lori Shaw Casarez. I'm the City Opioid Prevention Coordinator. In my role, I am focusing on substance use prevention among children, youth, and young adults, with an emphasis on both primary and secondary prevention strategies within the community. This work can also include parent and family awareness and education, youth mental health, schools and out-of-school time programming, and other areas. All of that to be determined more as we move forward. Last fiscal year, I identified a handful of local data sources to help guide a developing kind of multi-year, multi-sector plan. And I also worked in further strengthening our collaborations with Marion County Health and Human Services in their Health Promotion and Prevention Department, Polk County's Family and Community Outreach, their Prevention Services, and then Salem Kaiser School District. And then some side notes of just this kind of high-level overview tonight. I have a couple of regional networks that I've noted are starting to emerge that I hope to connect into as we move along. One is more informal, as an opioid settlement funding kind of regional group of recipients that have opioid settlement funding for prevention specifically, so we can all talk together about what we're working on. Perhaps there's resource sharing and collaboration there. And there is an alliance also emerging for drug-endangered children, led most likely by a doctor with a background in pediatric medicine. So we're also hoping to see what develops out of that. And then I'm tracking, at the state level, the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission's work, and particularly in prevention. Recently, they have been charged, thanks to some House bills that were signed, to amp up the primary prevention definition to help in guidance across the state, as well as to develop a statewide primary prevention strategy that addresses the youth continuum of care and how to prevent the onset of substance use among young people. So we're tracking that as well. There may be recommendations, well, there will be recommendations that come down from that that may help guide in our local community as well. That is my short blurb for tonight. Are there any questions? Dr. Brown?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was, Lori, your last name, was it Chavez?
Shaw Casarez. Two last names.
Shaw?
Shaw, and then Casarez.
Casarez. Okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you. So thank you for sharing that. So you mentioned ADPC. What has the governor said? Like, has she given a contribution to this conversation?
Well, if she's signed off...
Hold up. Before I mention, it's a Drug, Alcohol, and Policy Commission. That's the acronym I was using.
Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission.
I saw some folks looking like, "What did he say?" Yeah, that's what that is.
Yeah, the ADPC, yeah. Well, I can't speak too much to it other than she is obviously supportive. She signed off on these House bills to have the commission move forward with looking at, again, primary prevention, which is a really big deal in our work in all of our communities. I don't know that I can say much more than that.
But no money? There was no money? Was there any money attached to that conversation?
Probably to the commission. I couldn't, I can't tell you offhand.
Well, that's, I'll find out.
If there's any funding.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Counsel Tigan.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori. Can you just take, for those of us who don't follow all the acronyms and such, can you just describe what, in this context, primary and secondary prevention are?
Sure. Thanks for the question. So there is a continuum of prevention. Starting with primary, there's secondary, tertiary, and then long-term recovery. Those are, that's kind of the spectrum for it. Primary prevention is implementing programs, activities, strategies that are long before, like, a young person or anyone would engage in any type of activity that's risky. And in this case, it would be substance use in some form or fashion. So I've used this explanation before. If you envision a river, there's a river, and it eventually drops off and kind of looks like a waterfall at the end. And you have a child. Primary prevention are the swim lessons. Long before they ever hit that river, they're learning how to swim. Skill development, confidence, coaching, support from the community. They're learning those skills before you put them anywhere near something that might be risky. So that's primary prevention. And we would just apply that with substance use prevention. Secondary is more, now you're down the river, and the current might be picking up. There might not be an outwardly sign quite yet, but you're going to imagine they're probably getting tired of swimming, or they're struggling, but it's hard to tell. You throw a lifesaver preserver out to help them get to shore quickly. That's secondary. What that could look like is a teen has experimented at a party with a substance, but there's still time to get that lifesaver to them and get them to shore to save their life before we ever hit anything that requires tertiary, which is where medical treatment really starts to come in. So tertiary on the continuum is you're using every tool, person, equipment, whatever, to pull them out before they go over the edge. And you might even need to resuscitate them even after you've caught them, but you got them before they were gone. And then long-term recovery is really just creating a society, a community, that can sustain that long-term recovery after treatment. And primary prevention helps with long-term sustainability of recovery. So for me, I'm only focusing on primary and secondary for children, youth, and young adults. Ultimately, it's the whole community, because if you're adding in parent ed or anything, you start to teach everybody. So hopefully, that gives an idea of that.
It's perfect. Thank you.
Lori, thank you. This is really wonderful to hear, as, and you painted the picture so beautifully of what those different kinds of help are like and how important that, before they even get near the danger, coaching and upbringing can make all the difference. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
So I just wanted to kind of share my experience. Lori did give me a presentation for like an hour, I think, a couple of months ago, that really kind of started the conversation about, as we are looking into these reactive services, the importance of aligning preventive services and reactive services together, right? So when we are looking, as we are going to talk about the next two, you can see that it's a prevention, treatment, and enforcement. Like, so we are trying to find that alignment within the City of Salem program. So Lori, I appreciate what you do. And I'm really looking forward to how do we put those preventive measures in place so that we don't have to deal with the next two steps, right? So thank you for your work.
Counsel Brown?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure if this question is for you, or it could be for City Manager. So prevention, treatment, enforcement, right? So I'm going to assume that you are not the person that's going to be the enforcement, right? That's going to be the people sitting behind you.
Correct.
So is there a way that we can hear how the chief's vision kind of overlaps with this, too? Or have we heard that already?
No, they're up next. I just want to make sure that if you have any questions for Lori, once she's done, then I'm going to call the other two speakers.
Got it. I'm sorry. I'm following Ward Three's example. I apologize. That's wrong of me.
Lori, next time you come, I hope you'll bring your graphic. Okay? Thank you.
Lori, thanks. So I have Chief Gurbath to talk about the treatment. Yeah. We practiced.
Counsel Brown, not the chief you wanted, I know. But in treatment...
It's all good. It's good. I love you both. I love you both.
So certainly, we provide emergent treatment. And that is done every day within the city. Advanced life support, saving lives through emergent treatment. And with the community response model that we are proposing, we can move into more advanced treatment, medical-assisted treatments that can actually prevent withdrawal and start getting people connected to services. And then prevention is that focus on our highest utilizations of 911, where many of them are suffering from substance use and abuse disorders. Sir?
Trust me. You know me. I don't like awkward silence. I will fill the void. So with that, when you presented to us earlier, you mentioned, you know, Narcan, right? And I've, this is not a privilege, what I'm about to say, but I've witnessed folks from Chief Womack's team having to do that. I've witnessed folks from your team having to do that. Do you know what there's a, like, how much does that cost us? Do you have that, not, if you don't know right now, that's fine. But do you have an idea how much that costs us?
I don't. I'll have to go look.
Okay. So with that last part of the enforcement, can you kind of walk us through, like, an example of what that could?
Enforcement?
Yes.
I'm going to have to defer to the police chief on enforcement.
I didn't do that on purpose. Please, no, I did not do that on purpose.
Anything else for me, or?
Yeah, Counsel Matthews.
So I've talked about this several times before, but my first ride-along I did with you guys, I don't remember if it was right before I, I don't know. Anyway, my first ride-along I did with you guys, we ended up having eight overdoses across the city that night, right? And so a shocking outcome for me. And so it was very much gotten planted in my brain. And that's why you'll hear me talk so much about the drug enforcement piece. But kind of looking at that and knowing that tonight's been all about trying to allocate resources towards making a difference in not only the perception of community, what people see, but also our financial state of reducing the calls for your team in some aspects, reducing the calls for police in some aspects. Do you have a projection on kind of how many calls you're running right now for overdoses and things related to overdoses, or drugs generally?
Yeah, I know, I know. Just as we look at what we consider an overdose, what we classify and triage and dispatch as an overdose, we're well over a thousand this year. However, there is an exponential larger number that come over as something different. It could come over as a cardiac arrest. It can come over as a respiratory arrest. And it is actually the result of an overdose. Right now, one of the results of us becoming a truly data-informed agency, we've brought on data analysts. We are really looking at all the data, and we're looking at a lot of patient outcomes. And so that is one of the areas we're filtering to go, to look at, not only what we were dispatched as, but what was the actual treatment and what was the patient outcome to get a more accurate number.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Counsel Brown?
Thank you. I'm going to follow Counsel Matthews' logic. So, chief, a thousand, it's a lot. Can you share with us the direct correlation, or is there one, with folks who are unsheltered? And how many of the unsheltered are people that you are basically responding to?
I do, I don't have it offhand. I can go grab my computer, and I could tell you. We do track that data.
And the reason I ask is because I think that's important information for the public to know, because all folks who are unsheltered are not abusing drugs. But there is a large percentage of folks that are, and some of those folks are young people. And so being able to share that with us or even the public, it just kind of, you know, it's a good reminder that, hey, this is a growing problem, but it's also an expensive problem, so.
Yeah, many of our highest 911 users that we're talking about directly connecting with have competing issues as well. It's not just substance use and substance use. And so certainly, that is a high percentage of population.
Right. And Madam Mayor, she alluded to this earlier, and I'm just going to, like, bring it back and focus. You know, we're about to change seasons, right? We're about to change seasons. You know, the rain's about to come back, and a lot of us are depressed about that. I'm one of them. So we know that things are about to change. And when we were on these ride-alongs with your team and members of Chief Womack's team, there are some folks who are unsheltered who know the system, meaning that when it gets like Thursday or Friday, and the weather is really bad, there are some folks who will call 911 because they know that they can get a good ride to the hospital, but also they could be there for two or three days because it's a bed. And so I think that's a part of the information that you and Chief Womack also do. And I think the public really needs to know that that's also something that we pay for, because when someone utilizes those services, because you have to respond to them, and when they get sent to the hospital for ER, for whatever the situation may be, there's a cost behind that. No question there. Just dollar signs.
Counsel Bang?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Gurbath, I appreciate the team, what you and your team do and what the fire department does. It makes me think back to my ride-along with Station Three and just how busy they were. Well, I thought they were busy, but they said it was a quiet night, so. But I'm glad that we're having a discussion about drug prevention and drug treatment, because I think that goes hand in hand with Counsel Matthews' concern about drug enforcement. And so with the co-response model being discussed, I hope that helps alleviate some of the burden on the fire department to truly be able to respond to some other emergencies that need fire engines and ambulances. And so this is more of a comment, but I appreciate that this is part of the conversation. So thank you, chief, for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. So Chief Womack, if you can come and talk about the drug enforcement side of it?
Mayor and Council, hi again. Trevor Womack, Chief of Police. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to this issue a bit. Just a few things. Hopefully, I'm not too disorganized on this one, but it's a big, complex topic. And so I'll just try to package up some main thoughts at first, and then be happy to take questions and get into whatever detail we want to get into. But as the chief of police, my, I think one of my primary roles is to set the vision and direction, the strategic direction of our police department, right? And so that has a lot to do about capacity, competing interests, priorities, and what's effective and the most valuable use of our resources, right? So we have a strategic plan that we just finished for three years that you've all seen. It has us focused on safety, legitimacy, and excellence. We have our second three-year version of that. It's going to hit you in October. You're about to see that. Safety, trust, and excellence. We're building upon the work that we've been doing. Safety is kind of where this primarily falls, right? This drug enforcement idea and some of the things we're talking about tonight. Let me give you an example of another competing priority first before I talk about this. Last year, we had the most traffic fatalities in our city than we've ever had in our city's history. My traffic team was down a few positions for a couple of years. Right now, it's full with only seven? Seven people. I want 15 or 16 traffic officers. Okay, this is the competing interests and needs that we have. Filling those few positions and getting us back to full staffing and traffic to seven and giving them a mission to drive down traffic fatalities in our community has been effective. I looked at the data today, and from January through August, 24 compared to 25. They've issued 126% more citations, 152% more warnings to drivers, written 41% more police reports, and made 182 more arrests, just that team. Traffic fatalities went from 17 to five. Okay, we're not talking about traffic parties right now. But as a chief of police, these are the priorities that I'm dealing with when I talk about where I decide to invest my resources and time. That is an effective outcome and a good use of our resources. Some would have a competing interest, and I've heard this call from some, that we should eliminate my traffic team and create a drug enforcement team. There's a give and take in anything that we do. And so I just want to set that context there. There's a finite amount of resources. We need to use them as best we possibly can. So that's kind of the capacity and the competing interest thing that I mentioned. But there's also this effectiveness piece, especially when we talk about drug enforcement. We're not in the 90s or the 2000s anymore. That's when we had robust state-level drug enforcement teams. Like, here we had Magnet, for example. There was a team like that, very effective, because the laws were different at the time, too. So when I look at, can we do that today? No, we don't have the same laws in place that we did back then. And it's kind of a romancing of the past, and things were better in these days. If we only did this again, it would solve all our problems. And you know, I have to live in the world of reality when that's not effective anymore. That's not a feasible response anymore. So what do we do? You know, in today's environment, with this capacity and this assessment of our laws, our case law and our state law, don't forget, when we talk about the law, you know, I arrived in December of 2020, and the state of Oregon decriminalized drugs possession at that time. Fast forward to more recently, four years later, we recriminalized the drugs, right? Well, we recriminalized our drugs to a misdemeanor, a special misdemeanor that requires deflection primarily. It's not a criminal justice sanction anymore, really. It's a deflection effort. The old way we used to enforce drug laws was, someone would have drugs on them, it would be a felony crime. And then you'd have leverage over them because they'd be facing jail time or prison time. And then they would tell you who their dealer was. And that person would tell them who their dealer is. We would work our way up the chain, and we would interdict drugs in that way. That doesn't exist anymore for us as a tool. There is no felony crime for possession anymore. There's actually no consequence for possession anymore. It's treatment and services. So from the criminal justice standpoint on enforcement, that tool's gone. So we're operating in a different environment. That's all just to say it's a different environment now than it was decades ago. So what do we do now? The most effective way to interdict dealing especially, you know, we don't want to, we're not about arresting folks that are suffering from substance use disorder and making their situation worse by incarcerating them. Interdict the drugs that are coming into our community, the high-level trafficking. One of the ways to do that is your federal partnerships. And so we've had longstanding partnerships with the DEA here in Salem. And unfortunately, because of the capacity and staff issues I've talked about, we've gone from three full-time staff to that federal team down to one today. There's only one more, but at the same time, we're the only agency in our region that has anybody assigned to that team. The DEA task force in our region is DEA and Salem PD. And so that is a dedication and a commitment to interdicting drugs. It's a heavy commitment, based on my priorities, actually. We have one officer full-time assigned to the DEU, we call it, which is a drug enforcement unit, which is our federal partnership with DEA. High-level interdiction. Deputy Chief Aguilar oversees this team as well. And so she has some information on the kind of drugs and amounts they're seizing just in the past year, just to give you an idea. It's a lot. There's heavy trafficking going through our community. Then we have a Strategic Investigations Unit, which in the old days was called Street Crimes. So it's just a new name, same sort of team. It's a proactive team of several detectives. Six, again. So these teams are small. They're not as robust as they should be. But this mission, the mission of our Street Crimes Team, which is now the Strategic Investigations Unit, is a specialized group. Drugs, gangs, shootings, right? That's what they're focused on. Shooting's in our community on the rise as well, too, right? Violent crime has been increasing for 10 years. So I have that competing interest to deal with also. We kicked off our Community Violence Reduction Initiative. We need some sort of resources behind that on the enforcement side as well. And so that's what we have this team focused a little bit on, too. Let's go after the illegal guns. And DC Aguilar has some stats on how many guns, illegal guns, we've taken off the street. And let's go after the gang-associated violence that's happening. It's driving a lot of our shootings. We know that from the data. And let's go after the drugs, especially when there's a nexus, especially when the drugs are fueling the violence. We want to go after those drug dealers for sure. And so that's what this team does. And so we have the six people assigned to SIU. We have one officer still detective assigned to DEU. So that's seven total, really, that are kind of dedicated to this type of work. So I just wanted to overview that, kind of give some information on how we have to make these prior decisions. And as, but as we cast this vision for the future, that's where we're at today, is if we're going to add capacity to our organization, where do we want to go with that? What would that new capacity be directed towards? That's a good place to be. It's an optimistic conversation to have. But I at least wanted to explain where we are today with the enforcement piece. So I think I will ask DC Aguilar to come up and talk about some of those numbers. But first, let me say, too, we're great collaboration with the county. I was just talking to Marion County DA today on this very topic, about how we address this issue. She agrees with everything I just said, as far as it's a different legal environment. There's criminal justice system capacity. That's not the way it was before. All these difficulties that we have with state level, I'm talking about state-level drug enforcement. Federal crimes are different. That's why you leverage your federal task force, is you get real sanctions, real prison sentences behind heavy drug dealing through your federal partnerships. But anyway, I just wanted to make sure that you know that I also, we also coordinate very well on both sides of the river with our prosecutors and our jail capacity on that side, too. So if DC Aguilar wouldn't mind coming up, and then we'd be happy to take some questions also.
Okay, I won't bore you with too many statistics, but I did grab some today that I thought were very telling about... I thought were very telling about the work that these units are doing. So first, I'll speak on our DEU unit, that's our upper-level drug task force team. So in 2022, they seized 769 pounds of meth in and around the Salem area. In 2024, they seized 718 pounds of meth in around the area. The most impressive number, though, is the fentanyl pill seizures. In 2023, they seized over 513,000 fentanyl pills. In 2024, they see slightly lower it, a little over 366,000 fentanyl pills. Our SIU team, as the chief, explained their primary, one of their primary focuses is drug enforcement, but it's not the only focus. So their numbers are smaller. They're also what we would consider a lower-level drug enforcement team. In 2023, they seized 19 pounds of meth. In 2024, they seized almost four pounds of meth. But most importantly are the illegal guns, the number of illegal guns that they seize. In 2023, they seized 79. In 2024, they seized 76. Just recently, SIU, within the last three months, has been involved in several investigations, one of which resulted in the seizure of over 27 illegally-possessed handguns. They also were involved in several traffic stops where they seized over four pounds of meth. So they continue those types of investigations. And next year, hopefully, I can come back with some more recent stats to show you just the amount of work that they continue to do to take those illegal guns and unlawful drugs off of our streets.
Okay, hopefully it paints a little bit of a picture of what's happening, at least where we are now. So I'm really interested in hearing, you know, as our policy setters, that's what this body's for. You set policy and direction for the city, and then the manager and the directors, we can help develop, like, how do we implement that strategy or what's the best approach to that? And that's, you know, I've got 33 years of experience and I get paid well for this job, so I'm really encouraged or looking forward to hearing some policy direction on this topic that we can chew on and try to come up with the best strategy based on your policy direction.
Counselor Tygen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really appreciate the presentation and the conversation. I always feel your description of the task that's set before you is very clear and daunting, but I'm always appreciate your description of it and your thought. I'm curious, as we talk about this question about drug enforcement and as policy setters, like, one of the things that we, this idea of reconstituting, say, like, the community policing model, or what people used to call the bike cops. It's kind of sad because we, for a long time, we're like, oh, we're pitting the parks against the police department. Oh, we settled that. Now let's pit the bike cops against the drug cops. So I'm curious, when, as policy setters, what, describe what the community gets from, you know, eight police officers who are dedicated to the community policing model versus eight police officers who are trying to interdict the drug trade into nothing? If you told me they could squeeze it to nothing and drugs would leave our community, I'd really want to hear that.
Yeah. So let me just describe the community policing vision, then. Again, I think I mentioned it earlier. Started off with, you know, high hopes of this robust community policing model and realizing the budget realities over the years, I've kind of just, it deflated me a little bit. But truly, the vision for policing that this community has asked for, we've heard it through surveys and through our community engagement assessment, is a community policing model that's across the whole city, that benefits every area of our city. West Salem is not East Salem. South Salem is not downtown, right? And so there is no one priority for Salem. It's, everybody has their own priorities when it comes to public safety. In fact, people define safety completely differently. And so the idea here is you need a baseline level of core reactive services. Those are your patrol officers. They're going to 911, they're getting there fast, they're responding, they're arresting people when they need to. You need detectives behind that that can follow up on your homicides and your major cases and bring those cases to conclusion. Those are more core reactive services. And we've gone away from a proactive police department to being a purely reactive police department. I'd like to be a proactive police department again, in a community policing way. And so we laid the groundwork for this, too. Our audit gave us some recommendations, said we needed about 60 more police officers to do this. I looked at it and said, we'd like to have a layer of community policing over this community. We redistricted down to six policing districts. We used to have 11. Went through all this work. We had to redistrict through our CAD system and everything, down to six policing districts. So the idea was we could build into that foundation. We're talking about a baby step right now. So if you picture a four-person team, let's say, in downtown, and a four-person team in northeast Salem, these community policing teams, maybe the downtown team is on bikes because that's what the downtown needs. Maybe the four-person team in northeast Salem is focused on shootings because the community is screaming at me, please save my son, I don't want any more death in my community. Whatever the need is in the area that we're hearing from our community, those teams are free from the calls for service to engage and build relationships with our neighborhood associations, with our community groups, our business groups, and look at the data and decide what the priorities are for that region or that area of our community, and work in partnership with others to try to solve those problems long-term, not be reactive. So it's going to look different in each area. That's a community policing model across the whole city. This is us taking a baby step into that. Let's rebuild a bike team, you know, a community policing team downtown that can serve our downtown area as best as possible, and let's do something for northeast Salem. We're starting there because the data shows us those are areas of highest need when it comes to especially the priority things we're talking about, violence, right? Those type of needs from our community. And so that's our vision for the model, so we're talking about eight right now, but if I, if you were to ask me, how do you implement that vision, I would say we need at least two officers per district, that's six times two is 12, a couple sergeants to supervise them, and maybe a lieutenant, but at least those two sergeants. And so now you're talking 14 people. You know, find a way, over the next two or three years, to fund 14 police officer positions, and let's create a community policing model across this whole city that serves our city as it should be served.
Counselor Matthews.
So you mentioned a few things, and so I'll kind of, I have a couple of questions, Mayor, just to-
Yeah, thank you.
-give you a heads up. So first, you mentioned 110, which I couldn't agree more. 110 made your job almost impossible. But I don't think it reduced drug distribution and made that legal as part of that, did it? It was simply possession. Is that right?
It was dealt with low-level possession, yes. And then the 4002, the correction that was made, actually cleaned up some of the case law to make it easier to go after dealers again, too. So that's true also.
Right. And then I don't think anybody here wants to discount the great success on the 17 versus down to five when it comes to traffic fatalities. I know there's been a lot of work done in that with Vision Zero and different things. But again, you kind of started this conversation with putting in the most priority things and making them the most impactful. And that is undeniably impactful, but we also just heard that we had 1,000 overdose this year so far. And so when I'm looking, again, for spending our money in the wisest and most effective and most impactful way, not that taking 17 down to five is not incredibly impactful, but we're talking about 1,000 also, and that's a big, big number to be concerned about. And so I guess, as I'm trying to hear kind of the things that we've done, like, it sounds like 700 pounds of meth was taken out by the federal side, but we were only part of 19 pounds of that. And 700 pounds in 2024 over that, but we were only part of four of that. And I get we have a person that sits on that.
Except for one officer on the federal side. So we were directly connected to that, yes.
Yeah. So, but as far as like our SIU team, who you said those six officers are the ones that are primary to our drug enforcement in Salem, we only are taking out in the last two years, what is that, 23 pounds? And so out of what was ultimately a little over 1,600 pounds. And so those are the sort of things that I'm concerned, that we're not getting that top quality of spending our money well and making sure that we get the biggest bang for our buck. And so that's where you'll hear me talk a lot about this. And I get that SIU does their best, but they are also spread thin. They have six of them, and they're running primarily violence calls, correct? And if it has a nexus into drugs, then that's when they dive into that. Is that fair?
Primarily so. A lot of gain connection stuff, it takes a lot of intel work, yes.
Sure, sure. So, so kind of knowing that, I mean, as we kind of move through this conversation of not only right now, but long-term, why is drug distribution and trying to prevent, right? This, we keep talking about, again, the difference between reactive versus proactive, and everything we've talked about tonight is reactive.
Yeah.
Except for drug distribution. And if you can catch a dealer before they actually distribute to the community that's overdosing, the 1,000 individuals we know about, why is that not a more primary thing we should be focusing on?
That's what I'm, if we need policy direction from our elected leaders-
But it's not, I get it, but it's not just about policy for me.
As we build out the organization, I have a priority for gun violence reduction, too. And one of the recommendations I brought forward was we need a coordinator to coordinate the effort, which we couldn't fund, it never happened. And we also need a team, an enforcement team, of a sergeant and a few officers to do that work. So I need enforcement team for violence. I need an enforcement team for drugs. We just need more capacity everywhere. So I'm just describing where we are today and why we've made these decisions today. But as we grow this organization, again, Counselor Tygen, you mentioned it last week, I've said it so many times, but the same number of cops today that I did in 2008. And so it's hard to grow, we've been retracting. We don't have a dedicated auto theft detective anymore. So whatever area you want to talk about or ask, we've pulled back from. So it's not that I don't want to do drug enforcement, or that I don't think we can or should do some of it. It's how would we do that? I'm trying to make priority decisions. So as we envision the future for Salem, how many resources is this community willing to provide to make these priorities a priority? I don't disagree.
Well, or I guess the part where you talk about the policy that we need to set, I think what I'm looking for from you is a little bit more direction on you still feel, do you still feel that right now we are prioritizing correctly? Or, I know violence has been our primary goal.
I actually do, yes. This is, and this is your chief of police that's currently in place right now. I actually feel that our priorities are perfectly aligned, based on my experience and my understanding of our organization and our community, I think, and our strategic plan. That's, you'll see, those are our priorities, so, yes.
Counselor Nordak.
Thank you. Well, I definitely want to, you asked for a policy direction, and I will share some of the lived experiences that I've had. So for 15 years, I was a lawyer and even briefly a law clerk at the Department of Justice. In my first six years, all I did was handle ballot measure 11 offenses. All I did was handle cases involving sex crimes, rapes, robberies, murders, assault at the post-conviction level, which is a little-known aspect of the law that I'm not going to bother people with in detail, but basically means after they've been convicted by your local DA's offices, these convicted felons will then try and get a do-over of that case. And so that meant that lawyers like me would receive the DA's files, would receive the transcripts of the entire trials. If there was video evidence, if there was photographic evidence, I saw all of it. And like you and your officers, I can't unsee it. And that included a huge number of crimes against children. And so when I think of priorities for our police department, I think of our persons' crimes, which is what that class is. There's property crimes, there's quality-of-life crimes, there are trespassing, et cetera. But persons' crimes, I think, in my opinion, do the most damage, and they can ruin lives. I have had cases where people who, after they have been sexually assaulted, are never the same, some commit suicide, some do all kinds of things. So I can't not think about that when I think about your department and the work that you do and where I see the need. And now that I run a nonprofit dedicated to serving foster youth, once again, I see the crimes against children in our community as my highest priority because their lives will be irreparably changed, their sense of self, how they interact with others, what coping mechanisms, what they're taught is normal by the people around them. That's what I see every day in my caseload. I do see a nexus to substance abuse because substance abuse is an often, it's either identified as an outright cause of children being placed in foster care, or it's related because the parents are so drugged up that they cannot provide a safe home. So children are removed on neglect. But the real reason they're neglecting their children, it's not that they love their kids, it's just they don't know how to put food on the table and make sure they go to school and have a safe home environment and keep sex offenders out of their apartment and so on. So I recognize that you can't only focus on a single aspect of your work, and I don't believe it's, I appreciate your desire to seek policy direction from us. However, I too want to be a data-informed organization at every level, our fire department, your department, all of our departments. But because of six years of handling ballot measure 11 cases and now two and a half years of working with foster youth and the families who've been irreparably damaged, I will never forget that your role in responding to crimes of rape and sexual assault and other forms of assault on all of those persons' crimes, that to me is a top priority.
Counselor Bang.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Counselor Nordak, for sharing that. It's, I, thank you. Chief Womack, I appreciate that the police department is making traffic fatalities and trying to address a part of our community that has voiced their concerns. To go from 17 fatalities to five is no easy feat, and it takes a lot of dedication, a lot of resources, and really listening to our community about what they want as their need and their priority. And so I appreciate you coming to counsel and sharing those statistics, those data, because that's what impacts our community. That's what makes my constituents feel safe to travel, to leave their homes and engage in our community. And so I appreciate you coming back and sharing that data, and I commend the traffic team for the work that they do. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Chief, I need to, I need some help connecting the dots. And so I'm hearing in the midst of everything that you're saying that we still have a need for more people in the uniform. Is that a yes or no?
Yes.
Yes, got it. So with that, what I heard Counselor Matthews say was that obviously we've taken some drugs off the street, but we still have those individuals who are distributors that are still doing their business.
And that's a never-ending supply.
Got it.
History will show that's a never-ending supply.
Got it. So I'm just going to ask is point blank, we have a strategic plan in front of us. Are you suggesting also that going forward, we need to find a way to hire at least 20 more police officers? Let's, I'm just throw this out there, 20 more police officers by July 1 of 2026. Are you suggesting that?
I know the budget reality, so I can't suggest that, but what I'm telling you is we need about 60 more police officers, and it's just me making that up.
Okay, so I said half that.
I've got data to make that, and then I've said this before, too, just, something's off when you just look at the comparisons, high level, right? Oregon's eight most populous cities, which were number two, don't forget, were the biggest cities in Oregon.
Correct.
Oregon's eight most largest cities were eighth for our staffing with police. We have second-highest felony crime, only behind Portland. Something is off. That's forcing me, if you feel a little bit of frustration or passion coming out, it's because these are the decisions I'm having to make. How do I protect this city and meet everybody's public safety needs with that sort of staffing? It's an impossible, untenable situation. And so I'm craving policy direction with some help making these decisions because right now we're focused on safety, legitimacy, and excellence, or safety, trust, and excellence. There's a lot under each one of those categories. Those are the priorities and the direction that I've given my department. We put a lot of work into it. Under safety, it's primarily about reducing violent crime, especially shootings and traffic fatalities, because that's all the capacity we have.
Right.
If you want to do more on safety, let's get some more capacity. So thank you, yes.
Okay. So having said, Madam Mayor, may I? So having said that, I'm going to say what you said, but I'm going to say it differently. 60. 60 is the number that if we could hire those individuals by July 1, that would be a win-win for all of us. Yes or no?
Again, I've got to be careful here because you can't hire that many by July 1.
How many do you believe we can hire by July 1 of next year?
So we've hired at record pace. We don't have a hiring problem, we have a retention problem still.
Got it.
Retention is tapering off. We went through some trouble in 2020, right? And our applications tanked, haven't recovered yet, and everybody who wanted to leave the profession across this country did. And so there was mass exodus and a lot less people who wanted to take the job. It put us in a hole. We had 26 vacancies at one point. Today, we are bouncing around 10 vacancies. We're slowly climbing out of that hole by record-level hiring, which means we're hiring 20-plus cops a year for the past three, almost four years now. We're going to hire, so that's about as much as you can hire- We're going to hire, so that's about as much as you can hire, because you also have to put people through a system, you have to train them, you have to, right? So that's about our max capacity for hiring, and we're doing it. And so my experience with my past agency, the same thing happened, there was bankruptcy, we cut 25% of our cops, the city funded it back again, it took us four years to net 40 positions hired. You can tear things down very quickly, and we've been tearing things down for, since 2008, and it takes a long time to build back out of it. So you can fund positions quickly, but the operation reality is, I would want to phase those positions in at 20 per year, because that's about as much as I can hire.
Got it. I'll say this, and I'll yield the floor, Madam Mayor. So Madam Mayor and Madam City Manager, I mean, obviously, you know, as Chief said, we, you know, there's a number that's there, there's a number that is reachable, and there's a number that is probably can't do all in a year. But I'm going to say this, and I've said this before, we're having these discussions tonight as a team, people are here with us, folks are watching back home, and the key thing is safety. The key thing is safety. Again, it is safety, it is safety. And in order to maintain safety and for people to feel like they're safe, and for people to feel like they want to live here, we have to have more individuals in that uniform. I don't know another way of saying it. I cannot provide safety for anyone in this space, but your team can, folks from Chief Grabot's team can also. And so if we are the policymakers, and I know we are, I think we have to have that type of conversation to where we elevate the need for more individuals that can do the job. And I yield the floor.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Counsel, for that. So I just wanted to kind of take a minute, and I think just from the city staff and the, those of us who have been here for a while, the frustration often is, we know what, where the need is, but the reality is different, right? I have been in these council meetings before, where a lot of times, the council does ask the question, what is the need? What do you need, right? Do you need, you know, 60 more police officers, or 20? Yes, we do, right? I think where we are at, the reality of it is, we can't do it, right? So every time we add a police officer, I'm looking at Josh, and that this number kind of changes so much for the next five years, and we have to manage that. I do think right now, we are in the right direction, when I say that, one step at a time, right? The first step is to, we need to be handling the crisis that we are under, right? And the definition of crisis, I think each of us have our own, but this council has defined, we are going to focus on the safety and livability. And what I'm really hoping is, we had good conversation about budget on Monday night. Counsel Tygen and I was thinking about what you said, we have to think about 2035. I was almost tempted to add that to my presentation tonight, so we have to keep thinking about where do we want to be in 2035, right? The right thing to do is to think about the future generations, not necessarily what it is today. So agree with all of that. But I think the discussion for tonight is, what do we do on the near term? What do we do on the long term? And we need to continue to looking, looking into, what are the options to increase public safety on the preventive services, proactive services, or we have that. So I also want to acknowledge Counsel Matthews, and thank you for bringing that conversation. Those numbers are alarming, right? And for some reason, I know you said it, and I missed it, I go home and my husband is just like, you had 600? Is that the number that he heard? For some reason, he was watching the council meeting. But it is alarming to kind of hear that. So we have to kind of think about, how do we get into that point where we also make that a priority? So there is more to come, but I think what I want to kind of bring us back to, it's a good discussion, but to kind of bring us back to, tonight's discussion is really to talk about, okay, we are moving in the right direction. I still would like to get some clarity on what I heard from you is, we don't, you guys are okay, or the council is okay, not to go with this to the budget committee, but we can come to you with a budget adjustment? Is that what I heard from, I just want to make sure that I heard that correctly from all, okay? So that means we will be coming to you with a budget adjustment on 10/27, and then we go from there. I'm not trying to stop the conversation, I think there should be, if there are more questions, we should talk about it, but I just want to bring that context, that it is, the reality is like, we need more resources, that's where we are at. But also, and I hear you about the drug enforcement side of it, we should not be having that many overdoses in our community, that is, something is off. So just want to acknowledge that.
Counsel Nishioke?
Thank you. I think that Antrim, City Manager, sort of speaks to this, but, and Chief Wohlmack, when I get to the question, you may want to step up. So what we've been seeing is the recommendation of the homeless service team to, the SOS team to, and then the potential of eight police officers, and that was at about a 1.6 million. And I think you mentioned, Chief Wohlmack, 14 to 16 would be ideal, and that would, I would guess, be about 3.2 million. So we would have a task ahead of us, if that's the number we're looking at, 3 to 4 million by the time we might get there, for us to find opportunities for revenue, but that's going to have to be over a long period of time, there's not going to be a way that we can find that. So I appreciate your patience, but I also am hearing you and recognize that the changes that you've made with changing the districts, working on traffic, because that is one of the main things that people do complain about, also with Vision Zero that we're still striving for, whether or not we ever make that, we'll see. But I think all of us recognize the need, and, but at the same time, we have the constraints that are within the budget, and how do we, how can we move forward? It's going to be a continuing challenge. And so, again, appreciate all the work that you're doing, all the goals that we all want, but I think the reality is, slow but sure, sights in mind, and do as we can as we move along.
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I know the chief is on the spot on this one, but I want to kind of talk about the behind-the-scenes conversations that happen. I had a conversation with the chief about, okay, what is the need? Of course, that is like the 60 police officers. And this conversation about the community policing, so he did talk about 14. I was the one who said, no way, we can go with the 14 police officers, and I'm also trying to give you a package that is doable. That's kind of why I'm kind of like, no, this is a package, I can't do beyond that, right? So from 14, my question to him was, what is the kind of the least, give me the least amount of number where we can still make some progress? And that's how that eight police officers came into the equation. And his ask on the two HSD officers is very much like, this is the bare minimum I need if we want to make even one step forward. So that's kind of where we are at. I just want to acknowledge, Chief, I know this is, it is frustrating to be dealing with this resource constraints that we have, and this is kind of the reality for many departments, but he is, you know, he's a public figure, and it kind of feels like, you know, there's a lot more to do, and each of us want to do more, but we are just in a situation of this budget constraints, and we have to do whatever the best we can. So just, I just want to acknowledge that. I was the one who said, no, we can't do 14. You gave me the bare minimum number. So also, it's difficult for me to come here and say, no, we need 20, 20 officers. There is no way we can balance the budget with that. So that's the reality.
Thank you. Counsel Tygen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to strike from the record, even suggesting that we start pitting types of police officers against one another, sorry, that was an off-the-cuff moment. And what I really appreciate about the previous strategic plan and the work that your team's been doing is that, it's that. You're taking as holistic of approach of the safety of the community as you can, given the resources that you have. And I think that is the most that we can ask for you, given the resources we're able to provide. I think I would, in the same night that I blew past our, you know, cooperation with our budget committee, would like to suggest, and this is kind of the two conversations, this has been a long week of conversations, which, all of which I've really appreciated. But going back and thinking about, on Monday night, when we were talking about the opioid settlement fund in particular, I certainly remember in our time in the budget committee in the past, when we've, we've talked about the shared revenue from the state, from receipts of alcohol tax and things like that, and how we try to put that money towards the thing that we feel like it's most connected to, I think in the past, it's been a couple of police officers. The opioid settlement money, as it becomes more defined, I feel like that's a great conversation for the budget committee. I know a lot of what we've been talking about tonight is connected to that, but, you know, I don't do political soapbox much when it comes to this, but it's so connected to what we're talking about. The hell that those companies wrought across our nation, and pure corporate greed killed so many people, and so many of the things that we're talking, talking about have root in the greed of those companies and OxyContin in the 1990s, all the way through to fentanyl today. That's why they signed the settlements, they're not going to jail, they're just sending us checks, and it's not enough. $900,000 for eight years, sounds like a lot of money, but it does not even touch the hell that has been wrought across our country and our city. And it makes me so upset, as you can tell. But I think that we have an obligation to squeeze every piece of value we can out of that settlement money to ensure that it doesn't lead to additional problems in our community. It's a great conversation for the budget committee, I'm so glad that we have, I'm sorry, Lori here as part of that conversation to talk about things like primary and secondary prevention, but, gosh, it just makes me so mad. And the things that we're talking about over these, this entire week, so many of them grew out of the inability of other people to hold those folks accountable, and it just all slides right downhill into every city council chamber in the country. And let's do the best we can.
Thank you, Counsel Tygen. To draw a little closer to home, Chief, in, I'm not sure what you called this, but it's safety, trust, and excellence. And in terms of trust, I think we have a little bit more work to do in that regard in building in the community. And I'm, what I'm talking about when I say that is what people see. I spent the first week of the school year observing a particular area, and had the opportunity to see the same activity at the same time of the early morning hours, and hearing from folks in that area saying, we're watching these people deal right in front of the school, we're watching these people get high right in front of the school, and then the, what ensues after that. And those people said to me, why isn't anybody doing anything? And that's, I can't answer that question, but I know that I saw the same activity at the same time of the day, nine days in a row. And it's like the ice cream man of fentanyl comes through, and everybody gets what they need, and then they go off to their day. So just from where I stand, I would like to see the ice cream man stopped. And I don't, and I think that what the people see is what builds trust. And some people deal with more than others, and live in harder areas. That's true.
Counsel Brown?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And it's not lost on me, Madam Mayor, what you just said, and also what Counsel Tygen just said, it's not lost on me. I think mentally, I'm still stuck on some of the numbers that I've heard. The first one is 1,000 overdoses? A thousand? That is just hard to fathom. A thousand folks. And then right behind that, with, in DC Agar's comment, was over a half a million pounds of these pills in year '23. And then you mentioned 769 in '22, and 718 pounds in '24. That is a lot of drugs. A lot of drugs. And, and so when we're sitting here having these types of conversations, a part of me says that it is up to us to elevate this, so our community can see where we're at. And I'll be the first person to say this, Chief Wohlmack, yeah, it's going to take a while to correct the damage that a lot of folks have done to our city, and they did it on purpose. And now we're left trying to clean it up. And so I'm struggling, I'm struggling with the fact, I know we have a strategic plan, I'm struggling with the fact that we don't have the money. If there's anything that sets me off more so, is that we don't have the money. And I wish, I wish I knew how to get more of that, whether it was on the federal level or from the state level, because until we can have that type of honest conversation, we'll be here again. And so that's the part that weighs heavy on me, the thousand folks who have OD'd, and those individuals, some of them were kids. That's a hard message to hear. Madam Mayor?
Counsel Matthews?
You know, I mean, I like Counsel Tygen, this also bothers me somewhat to my core. And so I see drugs and the distribution in particular as having a nexus into so many other crimes. And so as we're focusing on where our strategies are going to go, and where our resources are going to go, and where our priorities are going to be, it's why for me, I'm looking at it as one that I feel like we should be focusing more on. And it's because I see it as something that has a direct link into the violent crime, or gangs, or anything as small as petty crime even, it doesn't matter, it's, so much of it has a stem from that drug use. Even as we look into the homeless camps generally, I don't think there are many homeless providers that would say that there aren't a lot of drugs in the homeless camp. I think that's somewhat, somewhat of a consistent feeling. And that doesn't mean that every, or every homeless person uses drugs, I think Madam Mayor, or Counsel Brown, or someone else said that earlier, I think that's really clear. But it also doesn't mean that none of them do, right? And they're already our most vulnerable population, and yet, these dealers, we're allowing them to continue to prey on that vulnerable population. And it's not just them, it's our kids in our schools, it's your business owner that you know, it's your neighbor, it's all of us. And you don't know exactly who it is all the time that's using drugs, but the reality is, they're getting it from somewhere, they're getting it from somewhere locally. And we should have a bigger impact on what's happening locally in that drug distribution. So that's why you'll hear me get a little passionate about it, you'll hear me talk about it a lot, because it's one of the things I do feel like has a bigger nexus into making bigger impact in other things. making bigger impact in other things, so.
If there's nothing further, we are adjourned.